And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in the council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click on the button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the technical link here. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Here.
Councillor Jellaba.
Here.
Councillor Fisher.
Here.
Councillor Kennedy.
Councillor Kennedy is asked to be excused tonight because she is away. Is there a consensus at council to excuse Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Here.
Councillor Riche.
Here.
Councillor Scampfeli.
Here.
Coram present.
We have two presentations tonight. The first presentation will be the Augsburg Land Bank Corporation 2020 Annual Report by Chairman Bill Cosmo.
Evening, Mayor, councillors. I want to thank you for allowing us this time to give our report. As you know, this is a requirement of the Land Bank to report back to the city council each year. And we have previously sent you a hard copy of the report. Roughly 20 pages, so I'm not going to read through the whole report. You've had a chance to look at it. But I do have some bullet points that I would like to emphasize and get out there and get some of this information out to the public because I don't think there's a large group of people that know what we're doing or why we're doing what we're doing. So I thank you for the opportunity to come and speak tonight. Well, going back a little ways, I was here in the fall of last year indicating that we would be back for the annual report. And we were unable to do the annual report in roughly March of 2020. So I just did want to hit a few highlights from 19. I won't go through a lot of those, but that was the first year that we did receive funding from the community renewal around three. And that allowed us to basically take ownership of 13 parcels from the city. And at that point, 11 of them, 11 of them were deemed to be basically not worth putting any extra money in. So we did demolish 11 properties. And there are two that we are currently looking and doing rehab on and have completed some rehab on. So I think the total on the demolitions was well over $280,000 of funding. Compared those rather bad houses that were in bad shape, believe me. So we did that in 2019 and that was the bulk of our activity in 19. In 2020, we did receive an additional $530,000 from round four of the community revitalization initiative. And from that, we were looking at taking ownership and again, through the city councils agreement, we did take 11 additional parcels from the city after they required for non-payment of taxes. Also in 2020, from the individual parcels that we demolished in 19, we were able to sell six of those under what we call the side lot program. And those went to the adjoining property owners as the name would indicate. And those were sold, I think we would have based it on $5,000 on those. So those were sold to the adjacent property owners. They were combined with their current lots. So now those are all single lots of record. So we won't have to worry hopefully that down the road, one of those lots might be sold as a non-payment. And that's what we're requiring on all of our side lot program lots is that they combine them with their main house. And that way, you know, they have a vested interest in them. And they aren't going to just sit there dormant for any length of time. In 2020, we also were able to rehab 940 Lafayette Street, a small house out in the roughly the area of the Knights of Columbus, their backyard about butts up to the 940 Lafayette. And that is currently on the market. We were just able to sign a Realtor agreement with one of the local Realtors. She is starting to ramp up to show that. I think she's actually already had a couple of showings of that. It would make a great starter home or, you know, for a small family or maybe a couple. The work was done by a contractor out of the Canton area. It's a two-bed, two-bath, single-family house, has a garage. And we did put roughly $70,000 into that structure in 2020. Again, we did take possession of 11 parcels. And from those 11 parcels going into the next year, into the current year, actually, our initial goal is to demo three of those, possibly four. We're looking at prices from the demolition companies that we've sent out votes to. We are also looking at two new construction projects. One of those is through the Bosse's program out at Spark Street. And we've got a great relationship with Greg Sloan and his students. They are hopefully finishing that up with all the COVID interruptions and everything. Things are on schedule at this point. So we hope to have at least one of those buildings. We're also looking at possibly bidding on one of the other Bosse's houses in the county. That bid opening is March 31st, so we'll know then. So we're hoping to have at least two new constructions and then two rehab projects for houses that we took ownership of. Again, I would like to thank Greg and his crew. They seem to be very interested in doing this and it's been a very good relationship. Greg's been very positive about the whole situation with buying a house. And they put out a good product. There are several other ones in town that, you know, they've already done. So that was the bulk of what we were involved with this year. Everything was somewhat slowed down. Building materials are on back order a lot of times now and prices are going up through the roof on a lot of the construction material. That slowed us down somewhat, but we are looking forward to at least putting a couple of new structures in town and rehabbing, like I said, at least two more in 2021. We did also in 20, through the recommendations from the Land Bank statewide is we do now have a community advisory board, five folks that will start meeting and giving us advice on from different aspects. I mean, you know, we may not think of everything and being in the community, they may have some other ideas that we're not thinking of. So we've had five folks that have agreed to sit on that committee and that's been put together. Again, we look at demolishing three, as I mentioned. There's a property on Mansion Avenue, there's one in Rensselaer, and there's one on Madison. And I believe those exact addresses were in your update. So if you want to look at those. Along with in that report was 24 parcels that we in total had some involvement with and where they stand. And so I think that report was part of the latter part of 2020. And so if there's any additions to that or any updates on that, we can get those to you. We're also looking at rehabbing the old synagogue on Green Street. We do have an architect looking at that right now, again, converting that into a single-family house. That one might be a little outside the box, so to speak, on what we can do with that. But she's very positive about it and looking forward to working with us. And she's been working on that right now. Another one of the rehab projects we're looking at is the rehab possibly of 332 Park Street. It's on the corner of Park and Green or Red House. Hoping that we can financially do something with that and get that back into a livable space. A couple of other things that have happened and are continuing to happen. We have a relationship actually with the Hafteff Humanity up in the area. They kind of run into some problems continuing. So they're basically going out of business, but they were kind enough to donate $30,000 of urban funds to us because they feel it's the same type of projects that they would be involved with. So we're very pleased with this and thank them for their generosity to us. So that money will be used. And everything we make, if we make anything, I'm not going to say we're going to make money off these places. We break even, we're probably going to lose money on some of them. But the goal is to get them into taxable status and get individuals in the houses and, you know, and spruce up the neighborhood and help them, you know. Again, that's part of our reason for demolishing some of the houses we did. And some of them were no more than two or three feet from the house next to them. And, you know, that's quite tight for some of the areas of town. I know it's an old town, but, you know, they just like to have a little more space between the buildings. So and that's where we're going with 21 is again, we're looking at the demolitions and the two possible additions to the new construction and the rehab. So in a nutshell, again, if we did send out the report, if there's any questions that I can answer, I'd be really glad to and obviously Andrea is here if I can't answer them. So we did also include in the packet that we sent along with the list and the report, the audit from 2020 that was just recently done by Pinto Muzinski. And obviously, everything is okay with them at this point. So we're moving forward.
I think we can all see the positive results of the Land Bank already in short time. It's been doing great. Thank you.
How long has 940 Lafayette been on the market, Phil?
Just within the last couple of days, John, we had signed it. We were trying to Facebook and everything else and then we realized that we're definitely going to need a Realtor. And that's just happened, that's probably within the last two weeks. And she's been over there and I believe she's had a couple of showings according to a conversation today. So hopefully soon.
Probably multi-listing, so any.
I believe so, yes.
And then on the one with the lid paint, it was my understanding a long time ago that you could encapsulate that by painting it rather than actually removing it.
Is that the one on Franklin Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not sure what we're going to do with that one. We may do as much or as little as we can. The cost for us to do it versus the homeowner to do it is astronomically different. I mean, we are here at $80,000 to do that kind of rehab. We may, and that might be a lot more than, it is a lot more than we have the funds for. So we're looking at different alternatives. We may do the minimum and then sell it to someone who may want to, you know, do a lot different project than we want to do with it. So we haven't decided on that one yet.
Yeah.
We don't, that number really hit us.
Yeah, I'm not up on the current regulations, but the way it used to be.
Right.
You could just paint it and encapsulate it versus removing it. That's the city always did before, so.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if that's still the rule.
I don't know.
That's a sound house. It's a good foundation.
Oh, it is. It's a huge house.
Yes.
You know, you'd hate to have to take it down. And I'm not proposing that we do that. We're looking for any way we can to get it reused.
Yeah.
So, and, you know, again, this being our first couple of years, we're learning as we go. You know, it's been a learning experience for everybody. I would like to thank Andrea and the controller staff for the help they've given us because they've been very helpful as far as the background that we need going forward. But yeah, it's every project we get into, there's a little different scenario.
And is there not a funding round this year or is it now because of the budget or is there?
I'm not sure on the state level. I know the CDVG we're looking at, but I'm not sure on the state level, there's another round for that. Yeah, we'll definitely look at it to make sure we're in there as with an application anyway.
Thanks. Thank you, Phil. Our next presentation will be the Augsburg Police Collaborative Draft.
Good evening. As you all know, that police reform has been a topic since late summer. We got started on it here recently. And I'm just going to run through for everybody all the steps we've taken so far and where we're at today with it. As everyone knows, it's been discussed previously, the executive order required every municipality with a police department to perform a comprehensive review of police practices and develop a plan to improve upon them in order to foster trust and transparency. The four main areas that were to be reviewed were social justice and equality, transparency and accountability, training and policies and procedures. We put together a committee using the state's suggested model to encompass a representative cross-section of the city. A public survey was developed and given to the community to give them a chance to comment on both our current efforts and policing practices in general. Several meetings were held by the committee to review policies, procedures, training, current events in policing and other topics that the committee felt was important to discuss. At their request, we made available to them several police officers from different ranks and generations where they were able to engage and ask whatever questions they wanted. Public meetings were then held and they were held at different times of the day to ensure that different community members had a chance to address the committee. They were held both in person and online. After that, draft introduction and a draft action plan was formulated and developed using the new state mandates and as well as comments from the committee. The draft introduction is really to give everyone an insight as to the framework of what the action plan is and how it was developed. And in that action plan, which I think you all have a copy of, you'll see all the different objectives and goals that the police department, after the end of this, will be working towards. They're all in reference to the four main areas that we referenced before. So made available to all of you and on the city's website was the introduction and the draft action plan, which I think is a pretty comprehensive plan that we've put together. And also by presenting this tonight to you all and in presenting it to the public, they'll now have a chance to address anything that they may see that they feel needs to be addressed through the action plan and through the introduction. All set?
Thanks for your work on that.
Okay.
And you're confident that'll meet with the state's approval?
I think it will. I think it covers everything that needs to be covered and took into a lot of account a lot of things that didn't even need to be covered, so.
One question, Chief. How was the response to the survey?
I think we received 117 surveys, I believe it was, which not bad.
Good. Thank you.
Good job, Chief.
Thanks.
Thank you. We have three proclamations tonight now.
International Women's Day, Alfred Dan, because he brought it up. Doesn't matter to me.
That's a turkey toast.
No, I haven't had that one reading.
Okay. Be glad to. Thank you. So I'm going to read the proclamation on International Women's Day. Whereas the history of International Women's Day through comparatively, though comparatively short, is as bold and brilliant as its founders themselves long before the feminist movement of the 1960s. International Women's Day, Women's Days jeans go back to February 28th, 1909 in New York with a prophetic focus on women's rights. And whereas known originally as National Women's Day, it was first proposed by Teresa Malkiel. Is that the way you say that?
Close enough.
And loosely based on the urban legend commemorating a protest by women garments workers in New York City on March 8th, 1857. 100 women delegates from 17 countries agreed with the suggestion as a means to continue promoting the rights of women, including suffrage, the right to vote. And whereas on March 19th, 1911, International Women's Day was officially marked for the first time. More than 1 million people celebrated in Austria, Denmark, Germany, and Switzerland. Women demanded the right to vote, the right, or excuse me, to fight against sex discrimination in the workplace and to hold public office. And whereas in 1913, International Women's Day was recognized in Russia for the first time, where it catapulted to become part of what led to the Russian Revolution in 1917. In 1922, it reached China where March 8th was declared an office half-day of work for women in 1949. And whereas the demand for women's rights continued to grow, gain support, and shine a much-needed light on the poor conditions under which too many women continued to live. In 1967, the notion of women's rights was taken up by the next generation of feminists who called for equal pay, equal economic opportunity, equally legal rights, reproductive rights, subsidized childcare, and the prevention of violence against women. And whereas the United Nations began celebrating International Women's Day in 1975, which was declared International Women's Year. In 1977, the United Nations invited members to proclaim March 8th as the UN Day for Women's Rights and World Peace. And International Women's Day continues to be celebrated worldwide each year on March 8th. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Augsburg City Council recognizes the historic significance and importance of International Women's Day and recognizes and applauds the contributions of so many courageous women from many nations throughout the past 100 years. We celebrate the advancement of women's rights in all areas of life with the acknowledgement there is still much progress to be made and work to be done because in many parts of the world, women still live in fear and have fewer rights than imaginable. Be it further resolved that the Augsburg City Council recognizes the strength of every woman and believes that together we can, we will fulfill the sensory-old vision of International Women's Day founders to stand firmly together as we do all we can to create a better, more peaceful world. You know what you.
I will sign that.
Sign that, Mayor.
Would you care to do two more?
I can do one.
I'll do the next one.
I'm having some vision problems. These are small for me to read. Thank you, everyone.
Whereas April is designated as the month of the military child, underscoring the important role military children play in the armed forces community. And whereas the month of the military child is a time to applaud military families and their children for the daily sacrifices they make and the challenges they overcome. And whereas the month of the military child is part of the legacy left by former Defense Secretary Casper Weinberger to establish this Defense Department commemoration in 1986. And whereas military children deal with separations, deployments, frequent moves, and even their parents' injuries as part of the life they were born into or entered with their families. And whereas military children move an average of 10 times while growing up, these frequent moves expose to different cultures and languages and immersion in military customs are all common, life-defining experiences in the military child culture. Whereas the term military brat is a badge of pride worn by generation of kids who traveled the world with their parents, moved into adulthood with the knowledge that they have the strength to handle anything. And whereas military children often follow in the traditions of their parents and enter military service to defend our nation. And whereas the strength and resiliency of the military child is inspirational to our nation. Now therefore, the Augsburg City Council in recognition of the importance of the military child and their contribution to our nation's strength and resilience do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 to be the month of the military child in the city of Augsburg and encourage all citizens to direct their attention to the important role military children play in our armed forces community.
Thank you, John, and I will sign that now. I have one more, if anyone would like to help out on that one.
Okay. Officer of the Mayor, Augsburg, New York proclamation. Whereas April 11, 2021 marks the 53rd anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing for all who live in the United States. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, and natural, national origin. And whereas New York State additionally prohibits discrimination because of creed, age, sexual orientation, marital status, or military status. And whereas fair housing is a positive community good. And whereas economic stability, community health, and human relations in all communities are improved by diversity and integration. And whereas fair housing is integral to the ethical commitment of members of the National Association of Realtors and the St. Lawrence County Board of Realtors and is critical to the ability of all real estate professionals to serve their clients, customers, and communities. And whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to a common sense of decency and fairness. Therefore, Mayor Skelly, Mayor of Augsburg, do hereby proclaim the month of April 21 as Fair Housing Month. In Augsburg, New York, to establish Augsburg as an inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promote appropriate activities by private and public entities intended to provide and advocate for equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents of the city of Augsburg.
Thank you, Mike. I will sign that now. Thanks for help, everyone, and thank you Kathy for making the other, my other pages large for me right now. Should be better by, should be better by the next meeting. So we have three public hearings tonight. The first is seeking comment on the city's application to New York State Homes and Community Renewal for up to a maximum of $500,000 under the 2020 Community Development Block Grant. I am going to be, it is going to be bill number nine, and I will open that for public hearing now. Anyone cares to, can the public come down? If anyone attending remotely would like to speak, use the raise hand feature. You have five minutes.
I do not see any hands raised.
I declare this public hearing closed. The next public hearing is regarding an ordinance amending chapter 209, section 209-54, schedule 17, time limit parking of the Augsburg Municipal Code. It's going to be bill number 11, and I will open that public hearing now. Anyone wishes to speak?
Yes, where is this located? This right over here?
Right.
Across the street? Okay, thanks.
This is to make more, you know, public access to, for people coming to either the food bank over there or City Hall. Does anyone remotely wanting to speak?
I do not see any hands raised.
I declare this public hearing closed. The last public hearing is regarding an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into the necessary agreements to lease approximately 1,100 square feet of improved land located at 2 Caroline Street with the purpose of installing, operating, maintaining, repairing, and replacing a weather radar system and related structures and equipment. It is going to be bill number 12, and I will open that for public hearing now. This is the small weather station at City Docks. It's been there forever, but most people don't even recognize it. Anyone wish to speak on that? Anyone remotely, Kathy?
See any hands raised?
I declare this public hearing closed. So this brings us to personal appearance. At this time, anyone attending in person would like to address council? Please come down to the podium, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. I got a few topics I'd just like to quickly, oh, three meetings ago. Mayor, you made a statement at the opening of the meeting, which at that time I said I thought was a great idea, and I still think it's a great idea. You made the statement that it's time for this council to work together. So maybe.
Uh, so maybe at the next meeting, if you give us an update on how you're proceeding in that plan, I think it would be very helpful to the taxpayers. First topic, I'd just like to, to touch on it. I emailed the city manager and he, he got back to me. Is tonight you're gonna appoint a comptroller? I see. I just, I think I don't know the person, okay? Uh, I just think it's a travesty that local people that are more, that are well qualified for this position, we're not given an opportunity to apply, to talk to you people about it. You've got some people here that lived here all their lives, that paid taxes here all their lives, that are qualified to do that position. I know your philosophy is to outsource all city jobs. There's no secret about that, okay? I guess if we outsource all the city jobs, we won't need anybody at this table. We could hire a coordinator for forty thousand dollars a year to, to run it. My next, uh, comment was, uh, the city beach. John, you brought up a thing, uh, as a person that ran a city beach for fifteen years here, and Counselor Fisher was a lifeguard there. You have some problems with the Bridgend Port Authority area for a city beach. First of all, if you get a rain, the hill gullies, you're gonna be bringing truckloads of sand in there after heavy rainfall, heavy rainfall. I'm quite sure that the rules and regulations are more stringent now than they were back then. The beach was closed multiple times because of poor quality of water. Uh, you think you have a problem in the marina with seaweed? Okay? We get written up every year with the seaweed down there. All right, from the next day health department. Just manning that beach, that's shallow there, okay? You're gonna have to have a raft. All right, so you're gonna have to have a person on the raft. You're gonna have to have two people in the boat, lifeboat. You're gonna have to have two people in the lifeguard chairs, and you're gonna have to have a person at the first aid table, up and down. And you're also gonna have to have a maintenance person on top of the hill. So hopefully you've, you've, you've looked into the cost of this. Uh, the, the area is, is, is rough. Uh, you get some high waters, some rough waters, it's really tough there. So I think you got some problems there. I was glad to see, uh, this community development plan come about again. As I read this thing, it, past administrations in this city have come up with these development plans, the same has been presented. And, uh, uh, the past administrations have had funding problems with the state and federal government to accomplish what's, what, uh, Counselor Riche put out there, that is sitting in a lot of plans at City Hall someplace. Okay, every administration sitting here comes up with these plans, economic development, waterfront development, revitalizing downtown tourism. You guys all talk about that in your, uh, when you run for council. So that's nothing new. So hopefully you guys got an end with the state and federal government where you can get a, get us a ton of money to accomplish that. My next question, uh, on the constitutional tax limit, where do we stand right now with all the costs that you've made?
It, it's a city council meeting, Doug, I'm not, I'm not.
Well, okay, can you?
It's not a question and answer, you're probably talking to, you know that.
Well, I, I apologize, okay?
The answer is it's low.
Okay, so it, it was eighty-six point seven, somebody's gotta have a figure what it, what it is. I'm just, I mean, I don't think that's a hard question or, or a derogatory question.
Look, I, I.
It went down, it went down, Doug, I mean.
Well, okay, but.
We have the number, we don't, we don't memorize everything, but it went down.
Okay, I, I was just asking how much this went down, that's all.
I, I just can't remember off the top of my head. I mean, I, I looked at it, I had it, but I.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe, maybe somebody could call me and let me know what it is.
Kathy, could you make a note?
The other thing, uh, is our city assessor still all sick?
I believe she is, and I believe we have a temporary.
We have a temporary, how many days a week does that temp work?
I don't, I, you know, I, I don't, uh, we have a staff that runs.
So we don't know.
You wouldn't want us interfering with.
Is, uh, oh, wait a minute, don't even go there with me. You don't want to interfere with staff. The other thing, uh, is the county, is the county involved with us in the assessments office?
I, again, I have nothing to do with it.
They helped out a lot last year.
Oh, just asking, are they involved? So we are, so we are paying them?
And they have in the past.
Okay.
We did last year.
All right, so we are paying them, thank you. Yeah, so, long as we're paying them, okay? Well, just one more quick thing, and, and when we go back to, uh, uh, the comptroller situation. Will this person be in City Hall office where taxpayers could come in and sit down and talk and ask questions, get their questions answered?
Well, it'll be the same process as always.
There will, this person will be physically available in the, in City Hall?
You have, I mean, you have to be able to, uh, it might be scheduling, but, you know, they have to be available to, uh, you know, for, for citizens to be able to come in and and talk.
Well, that's, I guess, that, that was my question. Are we gonna be able to come in, or are we gonna come in, somebody's not gonna be here, we're gonna have to call their office in Canton or?
You're, you're gonna make an appointment with me like you do any of the other city staff, and we'll determine if it's best for you to sit down and talk to you.
So that, so.
And your time's up.
So that tells me that.
It tells you the argument you want to have, so.
I'm not, you know what? You know what?
Bring it.
I'm not arguing with you.
You are arguing.
No, I'm not.
Come on.
You are so unprofessional.
Sorry.
You are.
You send comments every week, every week you send, you get your questions answered every time you ask them. You're just.
Did I say that?
You're just here now trying to stump them with questions.
Don't, don't say something with the questions. Yeah. You are so unprofessional. Why don't you stay in Tupper Lake?
Okay, anyone else? Anyone else?
You allow that to happen.
No. Well, you, so your questions are paid in it too.
Yeah.
So, anyway, let's, um, let's move on to the next. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to come to the podium? Um, okay, uh, anyone remotely attending?
The first individual is registered as David Price, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears your line is open, sir.
Good evening, counsel. I have a few comments related to the agenda. Uh, the concept of raising sales tax to nine percent is counter to a business-friendly council. Goods and services produced and sold here in Augsburg are not much different from the surrounding towns and villages.
Dave, Dave, we're not, we're not raising tonight.
You're, you're, you're incorrect.
No, you're interrupting me, this is my time to address you.
But, I just.
I just wanted to help.
I just don't want.
What do we got going on?
I just don't want you to go on about something that's not gonna happen.
So, so you had a resolution about raising the sales tax?
We don't have the.
Right, that can now. Logically follows that raising the sales tax will only cause people to shop outside the city, thus causing negative returns for both the businesses and the city. I don't know if you've done studies to see how businesses would react to an increase in your sales tax, or how, how it would impact their bottom line. My assumption is no. But that helps no one. Also, there's a resolution regarding assessments that shows a lack of understanding of how the system works. Normal maintenance, such as replacing your roof, never impacts your house assessment. There are laws that are already in place for those things. However, if you add to your home, if you're gonna add a porch to your home, for example, you then would be improving the value of your home. Therefore, your assessment should reflect that your home value has increased. Now, in the city of Augsburg, we actually have a, um, a, a way that you can mitigate that by applying for the capital improvement exemptions, okay, which most people are aware of. However, any municipality should welcome an increase in property value. New York State Real Property Office demands that municipalities reach one hundred percent valuation. The utilization rate was, must be at one hundred percent, so it shows the true value of the properties. Augsburg fiscal issues, as they relate to property tax rates, are not due to assessments or assessed values, but to a lack of taxable properties. Masserating that problem is the number of state-owned properties in the city of Augsburg added to the city-owned properties. So to create a beach from the OBPA land and have it transferred to the city is contrary to the concept of trying to create more taxable properties. If a beach is something that people desire, we could sell that property to a private organization so that we can get taxes from that waterfront property. And as Mr. Loffler pointed out, that location for a beach is a reason it was shut down years ago. And I, I know that, you know, a lot of people don't like to read minutes, but if you were to go back and read the minutes of previous council meetings, you would see that we have discussed at length creating a city beach, both at that spot in the old city beach and at Little Park. And each time we discussed it, the costs were prohibitive and actually ended up costing us more than running our city pool, which is why those decisions were made. You know, some of this, this time spent on some of these resolutions could be better spent if you researched the information first and then came up with viable solutions to creating more taxable property and actually working on the problem that we know exists here in Augsburg rather than trying to fund something that we can't afford. Thank you.
Uh, I just wanna say one thing, um, uh, Mr. Price was incorrect on all of his assumptions. The sales tax is not gonna be raised. And, uh, as far as the property, it is Bridgeport property, and the city has no plans to own that property, and the city is also working hard to acquire state property and other Bridgeport property along with our own to get that on the, back on the tax rolls. But, uh, he was very inaccurate on everything he said. Uh, is there anyone else?
I do not see any other hands raised.
Uh, and this brings us to correspondence. Do we have some correspondence?
We do, we have two letters. Good evening, my name is Marsha Howe. I'm a lifelong member of this community, have served on committees, agencies, boards of directors, and have been an active volunteer for many years. I currently do not live directly in the city of Augsburg, but I do have a vested interest in what happens in my beloved hometown. I'm writing this letter in regards to a proposal that aired on Facebook this weekend. This proposal has a goal of opening the former city beach by July first. In reading the post following the announcement and bid for interest, I was alarmed by the fact that there was no concrete plan laid out, just a bid for volunteers, and when inquiries about the cost came up, the reply was, quote, "minimal cost," end quote. Now, let me be clear, I am not an accountant, an engineer, a politician, a health expert, or even any kind of professional planner. But even I know that in order for a plan to take place, you need a plan. Any plan that is worth doing takes time, effort and forethought. Augsburg citizens have been given hope that a beach is going to happen, and I would hate for this to fall through and dash their hopes because of inadequate planning. As a political representative of the people, the council needs its, quote, "ducks in a row," end quote, including consensus of the full council as well as input and approval by the citizens before making any public overtures towards a goal. That being said, here are my questions regarding a needs assessment slash groundwork for a beach. Number one, has the city already purchased the property for the beach from OBPA? How do you plan to secure the property if you haven't already, leasing or purchasing? Number two, it was my understanding that the Corps of Engineers prohibited using that area for a beach after it was closed. Is this true? If so, have you contacted them? What is their stance on this? Have EPA, DEC, DOH been involved in the planning? If I remember correctly, it was the DOH that shut it down due, to begin with, because of the geese issue. I would also be interested in the impact of our being on an international border. Does that require an involvement of the Department of State or Homeland Security? Number three, how do you plan to fund and reclaim the land if acquired? I understand that volunteers are being solicited for repairing bathrooms, cleanup, et cetera, but money needs to happen to purchase materials and tools for such a project, not to mention insuring volunteers. Number four, sewer treatment plant being upriver has been cited as an issue. How do you plan to remediate contamination? Number five, do you have numbers for startup costs, insurance costs, maintenance, security, employment numbers? Number six, you stated this would only be open on weekends. What is the plan for securing the area for the other five days? One would think the liability cost for having, quote, "an attractive nuisance," end quote, would be extremely prohibitive. Number seven, also it was mentioned that this would bring outsiders and money into the community. How would that work? Would there be a fee for only outsiders, or would there be one for everyone? Would being only open on the weekends be lucrative enough to sustain a beach? Number eight, the pool, while not ideal, is centrally located. Will there be buses running to the beach for those who do not drive? Number nine, have you considered handicap access? That still, hill is pretty steep. Is the ADA involved? Number ten, I have not seen numbers, only the solicit for volunteers and the, quote, "minimal cost," end quote, projection. Where will the money come from? We are not in a state of finances such that we can afford luxuries. If grants, great. How many are out there? Who will write them? We all know that grants are difficult to obtain and slow in becoming a reality. How will the deadline of July twenty twenty-one be met if waiting on grants? Number eleven, what will happen to the old pool? Are you planning to use it at all? I believe the cost of maintaining the pool was around fifty thousand dollars last year. Are there any grant restrictions on what can be done with it if not used? The beach is a wonderful idea if done right and would be a welcome attraction to the people in our community. If there is a viable and sustainable plan, Augsburg's volunteers will come out to support it. We have amazing people here who want the best for Augsburg. Just remember, the people of Augsburg also deserve a voice and cannot afford being presented a proposal that could possibly be beyond financial health and safety considerations of its citizens, which during this time of financial crisis is a very real concern. I am sending this letter via email rather than calling it in for you to provide opportunity for concrete answers, if possible, for the next council meeting. I look forward to your response. Thank you for your time, Marsha Howe.
I appreciate, um, Marsha's interest in, uh, the beach, and I do, uh, uh, think a central location in the future would be great for the beach. And a property that I believe would be very beneficial is, um, Fort property, the, the extra land they have from, with, uh, the Exxon property. It's nice, uh, shallow, you want a opportunity, it's not really needed. So I'm glad she has an interest, and maybe that, you know, they would, uh, consider that in the future to make a centralized beach with that property. Uh, and you said we have another one, Kathy?
We do, we have one more. Good evening, Mayor Skelly and City Council members. I've just read the amended agenda for this evening's City Council agenda, and I must say, it raises many concerns for me. I would like to start by saying that I object to the fact that there is a resolution to accept the draft of the, quote, "comprehensive development plan for the city," end quote. There isn't much in this document that will benefit the majority of citizens. I saw nothing to address the crumbling infrastructure like our sidewalks and city streets, nothing about green spaces or gathering spaces to draw pedestrians into downtown, nothing about our senior citizens, low-income folks or families with children, nothing about community buy-in. I saw a suggestion that the library that has been robbed of funding should somehow come up with a way to open a museum and charge people to look at items, and a few suggestions that other entities should surrender prime riverfront property to the city for us to market for ghost buyers that may never materialize. Now I see a resolution to have a city beach open by July, when we have a perfectly good pool, and a resolution to pay for streetscaping near the defunct movie theater. Again, we have city streets and sidewalks that are in a woeful state of repair, nearly all of them in residential area where the taxpayers would actually benefit from them. Also, if we are to market this city as a, quote, "river community," end quote, why would we do away with one of the two boat launches directly on the Saint Lawrence River, as suggested at the last meeting, to put a beach two hundred yards from our municipal pool? Lastly, I see resolutions to raise the sales tax. I respectfully submit that you should keep in mind that I save less than two hundred dollars on my taxes, and with a combined raise in water and sewer rates, and with a raise in sales tax, I'm quite sure I'll be paying more than I would if you had left my property taxes at the rate they were previously. I don't mean to sound negative, I'm actually quite a positive, glass half-full type person. It just seems like there is absolutely no regard for what actual citizens would like to see in a, quote, "master plan," end quote, for the city with all love in, that we all love to, and choose to live in. Perhaps before you accept this plan, you may want to get input from groups of people, sit with several groups of senior citizens and get their input, go to the Boys and Girls Club and see what kinds of various ages would like to see. Have several meetings in different areas of the city, so you actually get into different neighborhoods and see what families and homeowners would like to see in the master plan. Actual people live in the city, not just politicians. Respectfully, Regina Schellen.
Uh, this is a, a good opportunity to bring up that DPW Director Shane Brown put money in his budget to help citizens, residents of Augsburg with their sidewalk. It's a, there's a limited amount of money, so it's first come, first served. But I think it'll benefit a lot of people to, uh, to call the city and if they want their sidewalks done and, and get a plan to have some assistance with that. Is there, uh, that's it?
That's the last letter.
Uh, next we have our consent agenda that, uh, the, the claims is enumerated in General Fund Warrant number zero six dash 2021 in the amount of $574,088.30 and Library Warrant number six, excuse me, number zero six dash 2021 in the amount of 303,753.82 and Capital Fund Warrant number zero six dash 2021 in the amount of $0 and Community Development Fund Warrant number zero six dash 2021 in the amount of $17,028.16 and the Community Renewal Fund Warrant number six dash 2021 in the amount of $0 as audited B and the same hereby are ordered paid, paid ISO move. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Yep.
Couple of questions in the, uh, the, um, checks. Handful of them. Bear with me. Check 5464 Enterprise FM Trust for 7,861. That would be on page one of five.
Would that be our?
Is that our fleet management?
Yep. Rental, lease vehicles.
Lease.
Okay. No idea which vehicles those are. I mean, you know, I don't know which ones we here to keep, which ones you sent back. I don't.
Yeah, these ones we're keeping, obviously. Paying for those we're keeping. Lease, couple cars, pickup trucks, cars, all the ones we just got, new cars.
Have we been able to return any of the vehicles?
No. We, we haven't sent any car. You're talking about new cars sent back? Is that what you said?
Yeah, have we been able to return any of the ones that really were not needed?
No.
Kinsley Group, 3,900. 3542, same page.
I'm just making notes. Like, I'm not gonna be able to answer most of these probably.
I'd like it for the record. I'd like the answers for the record, though.
I, I think in the future, if we could present this ahead, uh, that would, you know, make things a lot easier.
A lot of this is being brought to my attention. Some of this is being brought to my attention. It's not just my overlooking. It's, it's people that are asking me that.
Again, we could, you know, even send an email.
Taxpayer's money. I don't see anything wrong with this format. 5528, Lexipole. 11,236.
Uh, Rob, you back this one? Lexipole's, Lexipole's, uh, policy to use.
For the police, for what? Policies and procedures for?
Police Department.
With part of the reform package?
No.
Is this part of the executive order? Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Wex Bank, 13,04280, check 4280.
Fuel, fuel cards, fuel.
Bear Communications.
Some, some Motorola dealers where we buy our portable radios, speaker mics, repeaters, antennas.
Forty-one grand. We, we upgraded everything?
Nope. We're replacing two repeaters, uh, one for the police department, one for the citywide system.
And the capital fund move of $49,0231, City of Augsburg Capital Fund on the fifth.
I'll send you back an explanation. It's, it's an interfund loan to cover things that we previously.
Does it require budget? Does it require legislative action through the budget?
No.
No?
No, I'll send you an explanation.
Thank you. I'm done.
Kathy, would you call the roll?
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Councillor Jelloba?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Reish?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved.
Uh, point of order, Mayor. Tonight, there was a third letter for letters of correspondence. I don't know if Kathy just missed it or not, but.
She, uh, she called and requested the letter be removed.
Okay.
Uh, we do not have any appointments tonight. Uh, and this brings us to council action. Our first item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A resolution to approve an application to apply to New York State Homes and Community Renewal for $500,000 under the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program.
I'll second that. Uh, discussion?
I think it's a great program for the city. Obviously, part of our goals for the city is to improve our housing stock and everything else we can. So, uh, it's been a good program and I'd like to keep rolling with it. Thank you, Andrea, for implementing it.
Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Um, would, Kathy, would you call the roll?
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Reish?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Councillor Jelloba?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by City Manager, Stephen Jelly.
An ordinance amended in Chapter 209, Section 209 dash 54, Schedule 17, Time Limit Parking of the Augsburg Municipal Code.
I'll move it.
I'll second it. Discussion?
So I think just to explain to people, it's, it's the west side of the street here, correct?
Yep.
And it's during business hours only from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM at City Hall.
Two-hour park.
Which I think was important. So. Two-hour time, wasn't it?
More public, uh, public access, a little easier. Um, Kathy, would you call the roll?
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Reish?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Councillor Jelloba?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into necessary agreements to lease approximately 1,100 square feet of improved land located at 2 Caroline Street for the purpose of installing, operating, maintaining, repairing, and replacing a weather radar system and related structures and equipment.
I'll introduce that item.
I'll second it.
Um, any discussion on this?
So I didn't, uh, I'm sorry, Steve or Bill seconded?
I did.
Just wanted to make sure that, uh, we are getting the, pretty much the design that we picked with the brick. What was that called? The Wyoming or something?
Yeah, the proposed gauge house will look very similar in design and materials to the Holland Michigan Gauge House.
Yes.
It has a hip-style metal roof and it has, um, stone-like block. It'll be much nicer looking than the, than the building that's there now, and it will be slightly larger, but very slightly larger.
Thank you, Andrea.
Keep it away from the corner of the rivers. Kids aren't jumping off them like you do with your kids.
Uh, Kathy, would you call the roll?
Councillor Reish?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Councillor Jelloba?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Deputy Mayor, John Reish.
This is a resolution to accept a draft community development plan for the city of Augsburg. It, it is a draft and by accept, we mean we just accept the initial draft and it, uh, per the charter, it gets referred to the Planning Board where we hope to have a lot of community input. Um, Planning Board will review it and hold a couple of public hearings, make recommendations based on citizen input back to the council, and the council would of course hold a public hearing as well for additional input and possible adoption.
Uh, I'll introduce this item. Second.
Councillor Reish introduced it, right?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll second it. Discussion?
Just, just that the draft is available already for the public on the, on the city's website. And, uh, it's about 30 pages long and, uh, you know, it's, it's interesting and, but certainly, um, I'm sure there's a lot of other ideas out there and maybe people don't like some of the stuff that's in it. That's fine, too. We need to take all that into consideration as we go through it as well as the planning board.
You put a lot of work into it. It's, it's very well done. And, and you know, uh, you stepped up and you've given a great starting point, um, for, for dialogue and, and, uh, so I appreciate it. Thank you, John, for that.
I think it, uh, I think it looks good. Uh, I can't help but agree with 90% of it, you know, uh, at least. And I think we're all gonna have different ideas or disagree with this part and that part. Uh, so I have questions regarding the LWRP. It, it, this isn't gonna replace the LWRP because I know, is it? I mean, we need the LWRP. That was a, a community, uh, actual document. It's like 200 pages long, extensive, and, uh, and that's what we use, I think, to get grant, grant money and things like that. And so I don't, I don't mind at all voting to have a vision, a starting point, if that's what this is. Uh, but I, I really would like to see public input. I'd almost like to table it until we have public input and get a different committee together uh, and, and, and kind of do that. And, and I don't mean that disrespectfully at all. Like I said, I do, uh, agree with probably 90% of it. It's, it's little things where, where I'm sure we're gonna disagree, just like at the LWRP, you know. I, I know I disagreed with some members of the public and vice versa, you know. And, but in the end, you accept an actual community plan. And so.
Yeah, I know what, so the idea is to accept it so we can get public input. You're not adopting it until after it goes through the public input process.
So we accept it as a draft, you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Get, get things started.
And then we have the public input process by referring it to the Planning Board as well as, and then finally it comes back to the council and there's more public input there. And then in the end, we would end up with a draft.
I think.
A final copy.
I think a lot of public meetings. I know when we did the LWRP, we broke it down into different sections. You know how you got this broken into different sections? We would have, uh, the public come and, and put comments on and, and explain what the original vision, where we changed things like that to reflect what the public wanted.
Yeah, the more we have, the better.
I would, uh, I would, I would vote for that as long as we, we, this is simply draft and, uh, maybe put together, uh, maybe start with a citizens committee to actually look at this, do something with the Planning Board. Okay?
Well, the, the, the Planning Board is a citizens committee and, and, and that's why it's in the charter that it gets referred to them. That's, that's the process and then the public can attend the citizens' meeting and, and offer their ideas as well as, you know, anything they'd like to see changed and then eventually it goes back to us for additional public hearings and comments.
Sure. So, all right, as long as we're recognizing it, this is a long process.
Yes.
Yeah.
It, it also says all through it that it's a draft, which, you know, it's a preliminary outline or a vision. So if, if we don't get it started, we'll sit back and it won't get done, just like most government, just drags and drags. So at least he stepped up and, uh, if you.
Oh, all the power, too.
No, if you, if, if, if people, like, we had a correspondence tonight that came in, that kind of somewhat bashed it, even though the glass was half-empty or half-full. But if you took the time to read the draft, um, that's on the city website, you'd see that the amount of work that went into it and the time.
Oh, I heard it.
That there's, there's no question. And if you were to go out and pay for that draft, you're looking at probably $20,000, $30,000. Now, just because one person took, or a few people took on a little initiative to get it going, this started last March, which it got stalled or actually stopped dead in its tracks. And there was actually a committee that was started to get to, to form, which, which ended. And it's been sitting dormant and at least John took the initiative to put it back out there. And here we sit today. And again, it's a draft. Put it together. Like you said, the Planning Board gets it. You're gonna get, uh, community meetings, citizen participation, you're gonna finalize with a public, public hearing. And then at the end, we'll adapt it if, or adopt it if we want to or not. But all in all, it's, it, it needs to go forward because it's gotta get moving or else we're gonna just sit dead on the tracks.
Any further discussions?
Yeah, just a little bit. And, and again, you know, it was, it's well done and it encompasses a lot there. Um, just from my perspective, and, and no way, shape, or form, am I opposed to anything of this nature. You know, when you review the LWRP and you compare a comprehensive plan, um, you know, I, I wasn't sure exactly. I, you know, I, I missed the last meeting, but you sent it to me the next day. And I did get a chance to review it. And, uh, you know, there's, there's, there's some things in there that I, I, I would like to see, uh, you know. But I, I guess if we're gonna go forward with, with a, with a process here to, to bring it about, I, I, I'm all for it, uh, without any, without any hesitation. But, um, you know, there, there, and, and I don't know if you meant to do it, but it appears to me that there's some opinion in there a little bit more, more so than, than, than ideas. And, and I'm not saying there's more opinion than ideas because that's not the fact, that's not the case. There's more idea than, than there is opinion. But, uh, you know, I think there's a great deal of work that needs to go into it and, and, uh, you know, it just, just from the outset. And I never did get back to John, uh, but I, I, I did wanna shoot him an email and, and talk about possible green energy aspects. Aspects of green energy anywhere along the place, uh, you know, whether it be in site center properties or, you know, my travels back and forth, I'm seeing a whole lot of solar properties being go, going up. And, uh, you know, that's, that might be something that could help offset and, uh, you know, help with, help, help with the, uh, the future of the city. But, uh, you know, I'm all for it, but I, I, uh, very strongly, and, and I, I recognize a lot of the stuff that's in there. Wouldn't be surprised if some of it is some of your notes from years ago, uh, while you were here as an employee. So, uh, with that being said, uh, I'm not opposed to it in any stretch. Um, uh, I commend you for the, for the work and the effort that you put into it. Uh, but, but going forward, it, it very clearly needs to, uh, needs to be, uh, a little clearer outlined and, and a little more community develop, or community participation significant and, you know, going forward. And, and I, I, I got a feeling it'd be a long haul, but I think it's a worthy haul.
Absolutely. Good job, John.
Thank you, John. Kathy, would you call the roll?
Councillor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Councillor Jelloba?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Reish?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by City Manager, Stephen Jelly.
A resolution to, excuse me, to appoint City Comptroller for the city of Augsburg. Whereas the city of Augsburg has a contractual agreement for City Comptroller. Whereas Angela Gray of Gray and Gray Associates CPAs is qualified to serve as City Comptroller, now therefore be resolved. Angela Gray is hereby appointed effective immediately to serve as City Comptroller pursuant to the city charter, administrative regulations, code of city of Augsburg, and all other state and federal laws that may apply.
I'll, I'll bring this to, uh, I'll introduce this item.
I'll second.
Discussion?
This complete? This full-time? This is, if we're gonna hire?
No, this is the exact same relationship. We have the city attorney will use the services of Gray and Gray that we've budgeted for. I simply now need to be able to have her designated by the council so that she has, uh, authority to communicate with the state, local government, et cetera, speaking on our, our behalf from the comptroller's office. So it's, it's the same plan that we briefed through the budget. We did not, uh, fund the comptroller's position. We said all along, we were gonna use this process at least through the year. Already, we've seen the benefits of having, uh, an outside firm come in, look at A through Z at our, um, at our finances. You all, you all know, we've discovered a lot of things that we're straightening out, getting things in proper order. We're counting things in places. I think we've even done, uh, work, you know, to improve our, how our audit process is gonna go. So this is, this is just continuing what. This is, this is just continuing what we already planned to do through the budget, we just need to officially designate uh, the same as we do the city attorney. And we'll revisit uh, at budget time whether we continue to outsource uh, this function, just like the city attorney or we, you know, we move forward to higher position, I think right now. Uh, just like we talked about at budget time, it's in our absolute interest to uh, to go this route. It's, it's just much more efficient for our accounting services, we're doing a lot of other things other than the day-to-day comptroller work, we budgeted, analysis in the sewer fund, analysis in the water fund. Working on the preemptive sales tax and there's just lots of things that we're using, uh, using the firm for and we're getting, getting lots of work done, we'll be in a different position to look at how we best uh, complete this function come budget time this year.
My question was, is this for the rest of this calendar year or is this permanent?
Nope, this, this would be for this calendar year, it's what we've uh, again, counselor, we didn't budget uh, for the comptroller position, but we budgeted for, for the service for the, for this budget year.
So if you're retaining her services, putting her on the city payroll until the end of twenty twenty one?
Well sir, she's not on the city payroll, this is the same as the city attorney.
It's just to make uh, it's more administrative so where you, I believe you've had, you have to take the calls from the state.
It's, it's a designation, it will, it will, it will give us, it gives us the authority to designate her as the city comptroller so everybody will communicate with her.
Will it exceed the uh, the, the price that we've got with her now?
No sir. Again, again, this is, the, we're, we're not changing anything we plan to do execution or operational wise, this is, this is just a designation. So that the, again, for the most part, the state and the federal government will communicate uh, with her on behalf of the city, without me having to, to be the go-between.
Personally. She just needs the title?
Yeah.
I'd rather have. Basically, you're, you're, you're.
The same.
TYA over the charter, you're, you're hiring a comptroller for the end of the year.
Well, it, really for the, the biggest part for me is, is again, we need her to be able to communicate with the, with the state comptroller's office with the, with the designation from the city to do that. Same as we, we, we had to designate uh, you know, Mr. Goldie, the city attorney, he works for a firm, he works for us as needed, same, same, but he has the designation so he can speak on behalf of the city.
Right. So we had no ability to be able to communicate with the comptroller's office or any of the other financial institutions of the state?
Or do they communicate with me? So I think everybody would be happy for me to have one less title.
It's a formality. Any other discussion?
Personally, I'd rather see somebody in the office now, I'm gonna vote no, nothing against Ms. Gray, she's done an excellent job so far, but. I'd like to see availability to the citizens every day, I'd like to see somebody in, in, in city hall and I'm not sure if the money is worth it. Obviously I've been asking for it and so that analysis isn't done yet of course, because you know, she's had a lot of startup time and whatnot, but. Uh, I'm probably gonna vote no, respectfully, so.
We do, we do have the comptroller staff available on a daily basis for the public, whatever their interactions may be, yeah.
Kathy, would you call the roll?
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counsel Jelloba?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Respectfully no.
Counsel Reese?
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly?
Uh, no.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by City Manager Stephen Jelli.
A resolution called for a special meeting of the city council on Monday, March twenty nine, twenty twenty one at six PM at city hall, city council chambers, Augsburg, New York, bill number fifteen.
I will uh, introduce that item.
And, and, and the, the topics are personal appearances and a resolution to approve the city of Augsburg police reform collaborate.
So, so the purpose of the special meeting, uh, again, we've got the, as Rob indicated, the uh, the draft police reform plan is up on the website. So we'll give the council uh, several days for people to uh, to review that and make uh, any concerns known to you or known to us. And that the special meeting will, will make all those known and we'll ask for council to approve the plan. Or review the comments and if there's something we need to change with the plan, it still gives us a couple of days to uh, to do that, make changes to the plan and get it approved and off to the governor's office by the first of April.
Is there anything else that, I mean, since we're gonna meet, just the two things on there that?
No, not, not this time counsel. No sir.
So this is due by the enactment of the state budget, effective April first, we're meeting on, we're allowing personal appearance and. Safe to assume that you're just gonna go with the plan that we have in place, which I'm confident is quite good if Rob's steering the show.
No, I think we'll um, again, I think we left a couple of days there counsel, in case something uh, does come in between now and then that we've got the ability to call another meeting. I, I think uh, again, we've, we had really good comments in the um, in the, in the survey that we took, uh, but we had, we had only just a few people uh, come to the public meetings that we had. Uh, so I think, I feel like we've done the uh, done the polling work to get, get people. Comments, but this, but the draft plan is up now, different than seeking input, letting people come in and hear things, so the plan is out there, so I think it, it is appropriate to let people see the, the plan, the changes that are gonna be made. And the programs that we're looking implementing, so um, I mean, we're on a tight timeline with it, no, no doubt, if you see the paper, you see everybody's right around the same boat, the public hearings are popping up, so we're, we're right in there as well, so.
Hundred and fifty-two of five hundred and seventy have been turned in, so. I think the second is the deadline, isn't it?
First.
First.
Kathy, would you call the roll please?
Counsel Jelloba?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Reese?
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by uh, Deputy Mayor John Reese.
It's a resolution setting a goal to open a city beach by July one, two thousand twenty-one. And it's the goal of the council to reopen a city beach prior to July one, two thousand twenty-one for the enjoyment of the Augsburg residents and area residents. Whereas the least expensive and quickest means to achieve this goal is to reopen the former city beach and the grounds of the Bridge and Port Authority. I'll therefore be resolved if council hereby establishes this goal and directs the manager to begin negotiations on the lease of this land. For the purpose of reopening the beach and be it further resolved, at all costs associated with operating and maintaining the beach. Will be borne by the city or through a cooperative arrangement with the authority.
I'll introduce this item. And. Discussion please? Any discussion?
So there was a, awful lot of uh, input on Ms. Howell's letter. That, questions that I think need to be answered, two years ago, maybe three years ago, I know we looked at doing this exact same thing and the DEC stopped us. Yeah, I believe the reason was the uh, the wastewater treatment facility was, was not complete and. We, we couldn't open a, a land, or excuse me, a beach within so many feet and miles of a. So I, I think it's important that we do the research, I certainly support a beach, I've always wanted, I, I enjoyed this beach when I was a kid. I don't, I don't have a problem looking at it again by any means. Uh, but I think there's a lot of work here and I'd like to see some numbers, that's my biggest hangup is numbers, uh, I mean, we're gonna have to build a bathroom, we're gonna have to.
There's a, a functional bathroom.
At the house or on the beach?
On the beach.
Well, that's good. So that's a lot of it, uh.
No, so it really just establishes the goal and more decisions made because he would need to have conversations with the Bridge and Port Authority. Then there would be a document for your approval and that document would contain the budget implications in that, where we would formally do it, the idea is just to work toward that. You know, we set up, I think, a fairly realistic goal to, you know, start, start the discussion. And that, that's our goal, that's what we would like to do, that's what we wanna do for the people of Augsburg. But certainly, you know, you know, he's already talked to the Department of Health, they're the ones that regulate beaches and uh, Bridge and Port Authority, we need to get all the approvals in place, it may not happen. And that would be unfortunate, but this is our goal, this is what we're trying to do as, as a team.
Yeah. Census of council to, to help the manager to do it and the other thing is then uh, if we, we are fortunate and uh, get it up and running. Then we can gauge how many people like it and that work towards a goal of a more centralized beach. Won't be so far.
Yeah, I wouldn't want it to be like, you know, maybe a one-year agreement if we can do it and, and see how it goes and maybe a rate to renew, maybe they won't wanna do anything, I haven't talked to them. So.
I think the biggest thing is getting approvals from everybody.
You haven't talked to them.
I mean, if you can get all the approvals and it's, there's not a lot of cost, I mean, I'd be behind it if this is. I, I'm a little confused, is it a goal or is it, are we saying we're gonna do this?
It's a goal.
Because if it's a goal, behind it a hundred percent, if we get all the approvals, if, if you're saying, but I think before we do something like that. Council needs to be aware of a cost analysis and we need to be aware of everything before we approve. Any sort of monetary shift in the budget and things like, well, that's law anyways, I mean, if we're not shipping money around. But uh, I mean, who doesn't want a beach, but.
Andrew and Steve would provide that to us.
A couple of different approaches, so you could have a beach and you could have the pool or you could have certain days of the pool. And you have lifeguards there and then you have certain days of the beach and you move the lifeguards there, which would equalize in cost. I mean, you know, we see our, get some projections and then, you know, figure it out from there. You have to get started.
It, it seems like everybody gets caught up in these words like draft and goal and gets something that's gonna be, you know, like cutting stone tonight and, you know, they're gonna come down off the hill with the tablets.
The problem is, yeah.
It's not, it's, it sits right in there, a resolution setting a goal, a goal is, is not uh, an adopting of any type of resolution or any monetary changes, it's just. Let's just go that way and see if we can possibly do it and give him the direction to get these people on board and if we could bring it home and the community gets it and it's not that expensive. Why not? You know, we could sit and beat on it all day long and say, you know, this is terrible, you know, we shouldn't do this because this might be or that might be, but let's look at it first and have them come back.
I don't think anybody's beating it down.
No.
I mean, this is a discussion, this is what we're here for.
I mean, it, again, it set a resolution to set a goal and we get letters with a thousand questions on it, which at least let them get started to get in the DEC, the, the Bridge and Port Authority. And bring back the numbers, that's, that's the way the process works.
And, and, and the process is, you know, we bring it up to the staff and I, and, and then ask the, you know, the, the city manager and staff to.
I remember it quite well and people enjoyed it and year after year after year and I didn't, I never saw any problem with it and I didn't see any problem with the raft, I didn't see any problem with the chair, the lifeguards, that the. I mean, people enjoyed it, that's where the swim lessons were, it, the whole community was there all the time.
I've seen pictures of you back then.
Thanks.
You were bronze, you were bronze man.
I think there's a lot of communities.
So do I. I'm, I'm certainly not opposed to it, right, I don't have any problem setting goals, um, this is a pretty. This is a pretty lofty goal to establish by July first for two re, for, for boatload reasons, you're gonna have bureaucratic hoops that we're all gonna have to jump through, not we, him and her. And they're gonna, and, and that's gonna take away their time and resources from projects to nail something down by July first of twenty twenty-one, a property that we don't even own. We've got liability issues with the Bridge and Port Authority, we're gonna have DEC issues and I'm gonna share something with you from New York Alert right now, that on March thirteenth. From the weather conditions, snow melt and events resulting in collection of system flow exceeding the treatment facilities capacity, over forty thousand gallons. Flooded Patterson launch untreated. Right here, that all goes down river and that's one of the main reasons why that beach was shut down in the first place. That's a hurdle that's gonna have to overcome and I'm all for goals, I'm, I'm not done yet, I'm not done yet, I'm all for goals. But that July first is a pretty lofty goal without having a whole lot of answers yet and I'm not look, comfortable pulling from these two right now in a short period of time when we've got. These resolutions that we just passed and the C, CDBG and, and the housing grant and everything else that we got going on to take their responsibilities right now to make, to try and make that happen by July first. I'm not opposed to a beach, I love that beach, I used to run, I used to bike the Lisbon beach when our beach closed, I don't have a problem with a beach. But this is a very lofty goal and I don't think it could be met and I'm not comfortable pulling that, those two right there from, from the, the, the issues that we have at hand right now. For a beach when we've got a pool that we can get open, I'm not opposed to running it forward and I, I, I commend them for putting it forward, because I'd support it down the road, but there's an awful lot of answers. A lot of questions, awful lot of answers, we don't own the land, that's a, a port authority, it's an authority operated by the governor. Look at the governor right now.
We've never.
He's a wet dog, he's not, he's, he's, we're, we're not getting anything from him anytime soon, let alone a beach.
We never owned it to begin with.
That's my point.
Right, so it was a simple lease.
With liability.
Right.
And, and a lot of work that's gonna have to go into it.
There's not a lot of work.
He's a former employee of the authority, he's gonna know.
I'm comfortable, I, I could do it like that, yep.
Then why, then why not just go ahead and do it?
I don't work there.
There's a lot, there's a lot of hoops a, a, and, you know, best of luck to you.
You know, if you make a call, uh, talk to the Bridge and Port, if they say no, then it's no, if they say yes, then you go to the next step, you know?
I, I, I don't think they'd say no.
And, and, and I do think uh, the staff uh, prioritize, uh, the beach will not be the priority over some other major issues. Uh, and if the two conflict, I'm sure they will, will choose the most important and this will go in the back burner, so let's just uh, let's see where it goes, just our.
Fair question, uh, does the city attorney looked at this, can we legally even ask for this right now, this, pass this resolution without talking to the Bridge and Port Authority first?
So, excuse me, I think counselor said it's, it's setting a goal, I think uh, by the next council meeting I'll have a, an update. That'll tell you that we can, you know, we can move forward to this or, or it's, it's gonna be difficult to, to get there, uh, the county, I talked to the Bridge and Port Authority. Uh, this will be on their next meeting for April eighth agenda to, to discuss it, so I'll go to the meeting on what this resolution tell them we passed the goal and just uh. They sent me the previous agreement that we had, so we started, you know, we started the legwork, so again, I think legality is, you're asking to, to set a goal to do something, I mean, there's, as all of you said, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. Uh, by the next meeting, I think I'll at least have an outline of the steps and the things that we're gonna have to go through to, to get there. And a, and a rough outline of the, of the funds it'll take to run it and I think we can put that stuff together relatively soon so the council can see is this, you know, is this anything that's real, I, I think, you know, one of the, one of the comments about, you know, getting people's hopes up, I mean, I. I, I, it's a public process, so we have to talk about it here, you have to authorize me here, so, I mean, so what we're doing is getting it out there. I mean, it's, there's no doubt, it's a, it's a, it's a bit of work in a, in a short amount of time, the good news is it's not, we're not reinventing the wheel here, this won't be something I'll have to submit as a new beach with plans or proposals as something that existed, so. And we do have, as you said, uh, I did, did look up, the, the file's quite extensive, um, from the last time, uh, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, I think at Little Beach or whatever you were, you were working at, so all the, all the process and the steps are there, so. We, we've got a little bit of a head start, so, I, I, again, I think by next meeting I'll be able to give you an outline to say here's where we are and here's a timeline and if the timeline may line up or it may not. I mean, certainly we could go to DEC and the Department of Health and they could say, hey, we're, you're ninety days, but the time you submitted a plan to us, well, I mean, that, there's, there's plenty of things I guess that could trip it, but.
I always found if you, if you, doesn't hurt to ask a question.
It's, I mean, it's all valid points, our, our wastewater treatment plant is, is under construction, we still are, you know, having CSO releases, I mean, there, there are certainly, you know, topics out there, but I, but those are also, all those topics existed for a long time while it was there, so I think we're, we're just, you know, we can get the initial. With the initial exploration done and this, initial analysis to tell you that, you know, we can, we can get close to this or not, again. The DEC and, and Department of Health don't, don't have a habit of moving at our, at our pace, I mean, we could, we could get told, hey, it could be three months, four months, six months before you hear back from us and summer would be over, so I mean, there's. But, but we gotta get down the road and I need, and I really do in things like this to go to the Bridge and Port Authority, I mean, I can call the executive director and say that some counselors have talked about this, but, you know, no different than this board, we wouldn't, I wouldn't come to you to, to take serious action on something that somebody mentioned to me in passing, so I think this lets those boards know that you're serious about asking us to look. So I think this lets those boards know that you're serious about asking us to look at these things. So I think the resolution is appropriate for the step we're at.
Kathy, would you call the role, please?
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
I'll support the feel-good legislation.
I'm sorry, sir?
Yes.
Counselor Reach?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillabah?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Deputy Mayor John Reach.
So a resolution instructing the city manager and city attorney to research ways under local and New York state law to ensure that a residence assessment does not increase as a result of general property maintenance. Whereas this council is desirous of encouraging property maintenance without fear of increased assessments. And whereas the council would like to adopt a policy in this regard, now therefore be resolved that the council directs the manager and the city attorney to research local and New York state laws to provide the council with direction and options to accomplish the adoption of such a policy. And they'll always tell you, I mean, I worked here, you know, you, you really can't do that because there could be a revaluation. You could paint your house, put a new roof on it and then the next year the city could be working on revaluing all homes and it gets caught up in it. So it's hard to like legislate that. And so all this does is ask them to look into options and there presently is an option available, an exception that I would say nobody knows about. We need to do a better job of advertising that for people so they are aware of it. But there may be other things too in all we're asking our staff to do. Our attorney and the manager to see what's out there for alternatives to help local residents out.
It is correct that a roof won't result in a reassessment. A few years back, we stored a home and put new posts on it and rails. And it immediately went from the permit code enforcement right over to the assessor. And, you know, and I was raised on it. So I'd like people to be able to, a lot of homes have been restored inside, maintained inside and neglected outside because of fear. We all know that. And the fact is, I'd like to be able, people to be able to, maybe their porch needs complete restoration. Now, maybe they go out every year and they fix a few spindles and the steps, the steps going up to it. Maybe they, they do it every five years and maybe for some reason they've neglected it for a long time. And they, the whole porch needs to be rebuilt. Well, I don't want them to not rebuild that porch because they're worried about reassessment. That they're going to get a permit and that permit is going to be taken right over to the assessment, the assessor's department and, and they're going to have an increase that very next year. Now, we can't, you know, as assessors go through and they change a neighborhood and, but, but I'd want people to be able to, I would like to see people if, if their clad boards are deteriorated, if they choose to put siding on instead of paint. I don't see, I think that is maintenance. I think rebuilding your porch is maintenance. I think replacing a window is maintenance. So I would like to, to be looked at if we could put something, an outline out there and make people secure to invest in the outside of their home. And, and I think it could really turn the city around as far as making it more beautiful and more pride. So that's, that's my feelings on that.
Go ahead and move it. What was your idea? Why don't you move it?
Well, you moved it.
I just read it.
I'll make a motion to introduce this. Do I have a second?
Second.
So, so we're just looking to get a basis of the laws that are on the books in New York State for graded assessments and what is called a capital improvement, what is, okay, right? So we'll all be in the know? I'll support it.
We, what we want is.
Into research ways into looking into other ways, within the laws, within the New York state law. Yeah, I'm good.
Do I do it correctly? So, you know.
You know what's funny is last time when Mike was on council, him and I championed this effort against a lot of resistance to try and give tax breaks and everything else to people fixing up their homes. And the best that the city came up with was.
The state laws.
Yep, state laws and this current capital improvements project that we have. This should already be a part of the city manager's job as far as I'm concerned, especially when we're facing the situation that we're in here. And, you know, you look at the city's reports, the LWRP, it's, it's all a huge part of trying to improve our, our housing stock, these CDBG grants and everything else. So I don't know if we need a resolution to do this, but if you got to put in a resolution, you can. We would underwrite it for discussion.
This way it brings it to the attention of the public and they're aware of it. And there'd be hopefully some, some action.
But we used to make them quite aware of it.
You know, just, I mean, there, there has to be a solution to the decay of many people. There has to be a solution. You know, you're not getting the tax money anyway because they're not fixing the whole thing. So it's not going to be a money difference because they're just not going to fix their home up. But I'm sure they want to have pride in their home on the outside the way they do on the inside. And if, if we can make them comfortable, ensure there's going to be, you know, the assessor's going to go around and reassess the city and neighborhoods over years. But if we can stop it, go from going right from code enforcement right to the assessor. And then they're hit that year. I mean, it was, you know, I'm like, you know, you change your posts and your railings, you know, because it's a deteriorated porch and then you get this big hit. I want, I want to put an end to that for citizens. So we have a second. Yeah, you.
Yeah. Can we move it?
No, it would be interesting as part of that review to understand how many people actually filed for that exemption that's been on the books for over 20 years. So year by year, we would have a number like two, two apply for it or 10 or whatever, see how effective it is.
We do, we do get that number from the assessor's office every year.
I wonder if it would help if we put that on our city website?
Yeah, it would.
Sure it would. When somebody gets a permit, they, they actually, the city actually fills out the paperwork form.
It's on the assessor's.
I sign it.
Have a patience there. Been there in Johnson 20 years.
Now that's a break back after it's completed.
Yeah.
In order to get any type of release.
Mm-hmm.
So they don't do it for you.
Can we move it?
Yeah. Just call it a show.
Kathy, would you call the role?
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reach?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillabah?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Deputy Mayor John Reach.
Someone else can read it if they want. Doesn't matter to me.
So it's a resolution to issue an RFP request for proposal that seeks architectural services for downtown streetscape improvements. Whereas the council wishes to compete in the upcoming downtown revitalization initiative grant sponsored by New York State. And whereas in an effort to initiate this process, the council wishes to engage an architectural firm to recommend streetscape enhancements and other downtown improvements. It could be incorporated into such a grant application, now therefore be it resolved that the council directs the manager to issue an RFP for renderings and other architectural services. It will be used in the downtown revitalization initiative application, which is a competition for $10 million that communities compete against for their downtowns. And it could also be used for immediate improvements as determined by the council. And of course, staff would need to, you know, quantify and define the RFP and develop it so that in the end we're comparing apples to apples.
You're starting to resolution.
No, I'm just talking. I'm all.
You moved it. So I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, just one quick comment here. I know that we did one of these not too long ago.
2011.
Was it 2011? Do we still have any of that left? I know a lot of that had a lot of the streetscape with it and.
Yes, Andrea.
I mean, do we necessarily need to put out an RFP and, you know, I mean, so maybe save the coin and spitball off some of that?
We, we, we won't be using that as a starting point with the architect. It was mainly, uh, Dillingham Jones building the.
I'm familiar with it, but.
And there was a little bit on it, but no, this is, you know, just a little starting point. And, and what we're doing is getting prices per hour, I believe, for architects and then.
What, what components of this is in the LWRP? Any?
No, I don't think so.
Any of the streetscapes are part of the LWRP? Sorry, Andrew.
The plan in 2011 was called the Main Street, the Downtown Main Street Revitalization Plan. I think it was done by Dadris. It is a streetscape plan for downtown. It was done in 2011. It was done prior to 2011. It was, I think it was adopted by council in 2011. The LWRP does include the downtown area. It does include some streetscape suggestions for State Street, the downtown corridor area, which has never really been defined. When we did submit a downtown revitalization application in 19, we had a series of public meetings to talk about where downtown is or where it should be. So where should those funds be focused? So there are several plans that talk about streetscape and downtown, downtown improvements. LWRP is one of them. And again, the, the Dadris plan from 2011 is, is another one. Our BOA also includes the downtown area, whether that's the area between Franklin and, and State or the Marina District, that those areas are fully encompassed within the, the Brownfield Opportunity Area Plan. So there are plans that talk about those types of things.
So I have a question. If we're, when we apply for the downtown revitalization initiative grants, isn't that supposed to be a partnership where you have to have some businesses step forward? Say, I want to do this. I want to do that, right?
Yeah.
And the city partners with them, control funding and, and, and that's when the streetscape and the architectural stuff is thrown on the table?
Yeah, the downtown revitalization plan, that is correct. It does, the initiative does heavily rely on partnerships with private businesses. The $10 million, previously it was $10 million. I don't know what it will be in, in 2021. There has been no formal announcement that that has yet been made available. There has been discussions that it will be. So I think people are optimistic that it will be offered in 2021 as part of the CFA funding through the state. In 2019, there was discussions about it being reduced to $5 million and having more than one per region. So I don't know what it will look like in 2021. But in the past, it has really focused on the planning effort. That's what the $10 million really is. It's a planning effort to engage the private sector and additional funding and grants come, come in afterwards. And private sector is required to, to match the state funding.
But the $10 million is not for planning. A portion of it is.
The bulk of the $10 million is used for planning and some of it, some of it, a very small portion has been used to do some streetscape improvements and things of that nature. But it's really the second round. It's the projects that come out of the DRI that are the, the bricks and mortar projects that are applied for separately that come out of that planning initiative.
But they share in that $10 million.
The private sector does.
The bricks and mortar, most of it goes to $10 million goes for bricks and mortar.
I, I don't understand that to be necessarily the, the case.
Any further discussion?
So I just personally, I'm, I'm going to vote no. I think, I think we've, we've got plenty already of ammo to work with. And right now, with our current financial situation, I think we've got lots of streetscaping done and enough certainly to apply for the DRI without spending a lot of money on an architect.
I don't, I don't think the state would, I don't think you'd have a very strong application using the 2011 renderings and using a 40 or 50 year old LWRP. You know, they want to, they want to see, it's very competitive. And I think it's worth the initial investment to improve our chances of getting the $10 million. And, and you're right, you know, the, we have to engage with businesses. We have to find projects and we have some of those that are coming along, I think. But these, the concept of getting renderings for the application and looking at suggestions will improve our abilities along with the, the participation of private businesses that are in the downtown.
Definitely shows the state that we're serious. We're, we're preparing, preparing ahead.
We were very close last time to getting some money, if I'm not mistaken.
And, and it isn't, there's not a plan that's spending a lot.
And you're going to pay money for an architect. And I believe Andrew is a landscape architect with their degree.
She wasn't so busy, we could use her more. I'm sure she would have some great ideas for. But so any further discussion? Kathy, would you call the role?
Counselor Reach?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
No.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillabah?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
No.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by City Manager Steven Jolly.
A resolution requesting the state of New York authorize the city of Augsburg to adopt local laws, ordinances and resolutions to collect an additional 1% sales tax. Whereas the city of Augsburg presently has an agreement with St. Lawrence County that governs how the 4% sales tax collections are shared with the city of Augsburg. And whereas St. Lawrence County Board of Legislators has stated unwilling to extend this agreement beyond the current term, which expires on November 30, 2021. Whereas the St. Lawrence County Board of Legislators has proposed a new agreement whereby the city of Augsburg will receive a smaller share of the sales tax collected. And whereas the city council of the city of Augsburg believes it is not in the city's best interest to enter, to enter into a new agreement with St. Lawrence County, but rather pursue preemption and collect its own sales tax. And whereas the city of Augsburg presently has the authority under section 1210 of the New York state law, tax law, to preempt 3% of the sales tax. And whereas pursuant to New York state law, section 1224, St. Lawrence County has the sole right to impose the additional 1% sales tax, not subject to preemption. And whereas the New York state legislature has in the past granted certain cities, counties the right to impose an additional 1% sales tax under the tax law. And whereas the city of Augsburg must enact its local law for imposing sales tax no later than September 1, 2021. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Augsburg requests the state of New York granted the authority to oppose and collect an additional 1% sales tax during the state legislature's current session no later than September 1, 2021. And further be it resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to Governor Andrew Cuomo, Senate Majority Leader Andrew Stewart-Cousins, Speaker of the Assembly Carl Hasty, Senator Patricia Ritchie, Senator Mark Walzick and State Comptroller Thomas Stopley.
So moved. I'll second that. So basically.
You have to add discussion.
I was going to just start the discussion. Okay, we have discussion and I'll start. So basically 20 years ago, there was a 3% sales tax. And the city was able to collect half of it. So we collected one and a half of the three cents inside the city. Now there is a fourth penny. So it's gone from seven cents to eight cents sales tax. So we're not going above the eight cents. What we're doing is we're asking our state representatives to bring a bill to forward that rather than that penny, that each penny going to the county, it will now go to the city. So we're just, since we have to preempt and we do get 6.44% of that last penny in our agreement with the county, now we will get that last penny and it's going to be, well, our agreement with the county, it was like $950,000 a year, really beneficial. It's unfortunate that the, the sales tax is so high, but it's not going over eight percent. We're just trying to, to keep some in our, our city to help us. It's, you know, it's over four million dollars a year. Uh, sales tax is huge part of our, um, budget and.
So we're not, we're not increasing sales tax at all. What we're doing is the county wouldn't give us another agreement, um, where we shared the revenue. They, they refused to do that. So we have to go on our own and we don't have the ability to collect what is presently collected. So we have to have state legislation to do it. And if, if we're successful, then it would, the local share would remain at four percent of the total, eight percent. The state gets four percent and the locality gets four percent.
I think we get two and a half cents.
So basically what you're, what you're saying here is out of that one percent, the fraction of that one percent, it's not going to the county and we're going to keep it all right within the city conference.
Right.
How's that? How does, and you can't enact this until after this, this agreement that we have with them that expires in November?
We have that, we have to have the authority from the state. And, and then when we, if they give us the authority, we would adopt, this council would adopt a local law. It would take effect when the present agreement with the county expires.
So does this, uh, lock us into preempting this resolution?
We don't have, we don't have a choice.
I guess the question is, is negotiations over with the county?
It was over when they voted and they vote down, they voted down two resolutions and refused to do either one.
If, if you want to accept two million dollars a year.
I'm not talking about accepting anything, Mike. I'm asking if the negotiations with the county are complete. So through the last resolution that they passed, we're dead and stinking now with the county?
We're still talking.
I'd like an affirmative answer.
We, we, we haven't had any further, uh, discussions on sales tax. We've moved on to the other issues, cost sharing, consolidations.
Shared with the county administrator, Mrs. Doyle?
What's that?
Does Mrs. Doyle know that we're preempting now? I mean, is this what the city's doing? Is this what we voted to do?
We sent them all the resolutions, absolutely. They're, they're well aware.
For the record then, right?
And I don't, and for the record, it was, it's not an administrative action for Mrs. Doyle or staff. It was a legislative action. So I mean, we, I don't know what else.
My question is, do they know that we're not negotiating anymore? We're not negotiating the sales tax agreement with the county anymore?
Yes.
Yes or no?
Yes.
We are?
Yes. Would they know we're not negotiating?
We're not negotiating with the county for a sales tax agreement after November of this year, correct? We're preempting?
Yeah, we.
Okay, that's, that's it?
Yeah.
That's when the contract ends. We, uh, we, we do still talk and there is an opportunity to, to change things, but if we don't get this legislation.
I, I just asked a very pertinent question and I got an affirmative that we're done. Well, you just changed the answer.
There are still, there are still talks. I mean, it is possible that, that the county can have a change of heart. And I believe Steve talked, uh, recently and asked like, what is your solution, you know, to this? And, but the fact is, um, we have to November, then the contract runs out.
I understand.
We do not get the legislation during the next session, New York State, then, then we're not going to get that penny.
I understand how the process works. You have to, you have to send it to Patty or, or Mark has to bring it forward. I know it very well, Mike. They have to bring it through the state legislative session. I understand how it works. I asked a question and I got an answer and now you're changing the answer.
Missed those meetings over there. So you could have been part of the negotiations.
I speak with many county legislators and Ms. Doyle and the treasurer, Ms. Cole.
And I, I think if the, I, I really, uh, counselor, I mean, to definitively answer your question, we, we have stopped proposing. I, I mean, we, we didn't, uh, like the county made their initial, uh, proposal. And then, you know, as you know, we started, you know, making our counteroffers. I, I would say if the county sent us something tomorrow, uh, I don't, I don't think that I would hesitate to send it to you. I'll ask you to consider it, but I, I don't think for us to continue sending proposal after proposal, negotiating with ourselves is a, is a, is putting us in a good position. So I think we've stopped sending agreements. Um, I think we sent three or four offers that were smart business. I, I think there's some discussion going on now about some of the shared services areas that it would make sense if, if this were all tied into together. But, but the county administrator did send me a couple of days ago. Uh, and I just hadn't processed it all to send you in a, in a spreadsheet form, but using the, the formula that the county would, would like to go to, giving us the same shares, the towns and villages. Uh, for two thousand and twenty, we would have received one point nine million in sales tax revenue. We, we, under the current agreement, we took in four million last year. So, so in essence, two point one million would have been the hit. So, you know, fifty percent, fifty-five percent of our, our second highest form of revenue. So the formula they're providing just can't work for us, cutting that, that revenue stream fifty percent. Unless of course they want to take, you know, services that are equivalent to, to, to two point one million dollars. So I mean, I, I, I don't know what other offer we could do, but I, I do believe the county administrator is open to, uh, to, um, you know, to continue discussion, but I, but she, I don't, she doesn't have the authority from the legislator right now not to do that. And there, and there just didn't appear to be any appetite. I mean, it came right down to, uh, to legislator Reagan and Forsyth trying to, to just get another one year extension to allow talks to continue, get us through the last of the COVID. And, and ultimately give us an opportunity to, to try to retrieve data, data from the state that we just don't, don't have. The difficult, the most difficult thing about this preemption will be, it'll be the, you know, trying to predict, uh, what the revenue, you know, will look like for next year under, under a model that I, but the preliminary work that Tim Johnson and I did, um, I, I don't think that it's, it's a bridge, uh, we can't get there. But it's a, it's definitely a system we'll have to ramp up to. This won't be a, a swift, you know, flick of the pen where everybody will understand this and their ta, sales tax here. And the state system is not, um, in any way agile. It's, it's very cumbersome. We'll move slow. So we'll, you know, this will, this is going to require us effort, but I, those numbers that she sent me the other day, that is exactly what we knew. Just even with as good as sales tax was last year, their formula that they want us to go to would have, would have cut fifty percent. So uh, it's again, as you all know, I've, I've had, had discussions with her about, uh, uh, looking at services across the board, but that's, that really is the, that's the number right there, two point one million dollars. I mean, where, where does, you know, how do we, how do we cut expenses for that? Or where do we make up the, the difference? And so that's been a discussion and kind of framing it. If you want to give us the same money as the towns and villages, then you got to do all the services that you do for the towns and villages. Yeah, and they're not, you know, and that, they're not interested in that. I mean, I, the first, we had the first meeting on, uh, property tax foreclosure last week. And, um, I, it was a, it might've been a small point, but I think it was lost on most of the county group. We currently do their work. We collect the county tax for them. So we're, we're currently doing county work. Uh, so I mean, we've, you know, it's, we're, uh, this, this isn't been, this has not been easy, but I think the good thing that's coming out of is we're fleshing out who's responsible for what, what level of government should be responsible for what. You know, Augsburg takes on services, uh, with their taxing their people for services. And are we getting everything that you're paying for? Cause you pay county taxes the same as you, as everybody else in the county. So I mean, it, it really, it's, I think a lot of, uh, a lot of tough discussions are coming out of this, but a lot of factual information is all deriving on what, what is the level of service you should expect from your state level government, from your county level government? And then what does your local government provide? It, it shouldn't be the other way around. Where the city government is providing the base level of services, the county overlays that and then state on top of it. We've, we've got that pyramid flipped around as far as how, how this funding ought to be operating. So, so I, I hope the discussions will continue on the topics. We, we made a decision during sales tax to set the topics aside, just handle the sales tax issue. I don't know in hindsight if it wouldn't have been better to have attacked it all. I mean, it's, you know, it's easy to, to, should have, could have, would have. And that we didn't get a, a sales tax agreement, but nothing they were proposing, uh, would have been, would have been more beneficial than the way we're operating, operating now. So.
It, it was a good effort.
Yep.
Uh, the city gave, uh, three written, uh, proposals to the county and the county never, never put anything in writing. And, uh, it was, it was really unfortunate. They, they really never negotiated. So, um,
Call of discussion, uh, it's done?
Yep.
Kathy, would you call the roll?
Counsel Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counsel Jellabah?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Reish?
Yes.
Approved.
And this brings us to old business and we will begin with Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
Uh, I just wanted to give you a brief update on grants. I gave you a, a bit of a memo. Um, so the resolution passed this evening. We will be putting together, um, and submitting an application for CDBG funds. Those are due April ninth. So that will be a priority for the department in the next couple of weeks. Um, an update on Northern Border Regional Commission. As you all know, the letters of interest are due for that this Friday, March twenty-sixth. And I did provide an outline. Um, I've been working with, with Shane Brown, the Director of Public Works, as well as, as EDR and the City Manager to kind of fill in the, the narrative specifically, um, the proposal at this point is that we would seek a million dollars, which is the maximum amount under the category for infrastructure for our Main Street pump station. Uh, the total engineer's estimate for, um, necessary improvements is one point eight million. So that would leave an eight hundred thousand dollar cost share, um, for that. So that's what we're working on right now and it would be submitted on Friday on or before Friday. And then we'll hear back from them as to whether or not the proposal would be accepted. And then we would be able to go forth with submission of an, of a final application and those applications are due May fourteenth. So that's, that's ongoing there. And more to come on that. And then, uh, nothing really new, but we do continue to, um, work through uh, an application through Bridge New York and those are due in June for continued work and maintenance, um, on the Lafayette Spring Street Bridge. So that will keep us very busy, uh, April, May, and June.
Yes.
What US, USDA?
What about USDA?
We had talked about USDA for the, the wastewater treatment plant, uh, options.
Yeah, I think at our last meeting, uh, the City Manager did mention that we did have a follow-up phone call with the USDA who pretty definitively said that there would be no funding for the wastewater treatment plant project so long as there's a PLA. So there could be additional funding for projects related to wastewater, distribution, pump stations, et cetera, um, as long as there is no PLA.
Off stations separated, I don't know. Go for that.
Thank you. Anyone else have some old business?
I've got some old business. Uh, it's regarding the contract that we, or contract change that we approved at the last council meeting. I know when we were having discussion, it seemed to me that there was only some minor, uh, language changes. But, uh, I think there's something very important here that was removed. Section three, letter F. Uh, the city will use its best efforts to provide assistance on ambulance calls within the city through its fire department EMS program when OVRS is shorthanded. And I don't know why that was removed. I was under the impression when we, when we looked at, uh, when we were looking at it and discussing it, it was just some, some language that, uh, it didn't really matter. And I was also under the impression that the OVRS had actually negotiated those changes and come to find out they haven't. And I'm kind of worried about that. Uh, I think that it's probably the most important job, well, maybe not the most important, but the, the biggest job that the, the fire department does in the city is EMS service. And, uh, I, I know that they're not responding to some calls. And that may be a slightly separate issue in terms of an index, uh, safety index possibly from December twentieth or that era. Uh, I know some things changed. I know the rescue squad wanted that not to change. They want our EMS service. Uh, I know shortly after that, there was a call for a, uh, a seizure. And that's one of the things that was taken off the table. A person died. Uh, and on Monday, there was a letter that wasn't read tonight, but a lady was describing, she called me on it and her client in city court had a seizure, took over thirty minutes for an EMS rescue squad to get there. Uh, and it, to me, it appears like there's a movement to get rid of the EMS program in the fire department, is what I'm saying. And I want that three F put back in that contract so that we can continue to perform for the citizens. They're, they're paying for EMS service. And I, and I want to get the best EMS service we can provide. That's what our paid fire department does. And I want to get that put back in there. I think people, this is a life and death situation. And it's, it's a shame to, to, to lose that. So, uh, I wish I had a question at one section a little bit better last week, but I didn't, or my vote certainly would have been different. But I'd like to get that put in and maybe you can explain the changes that have been taking place to the council and see if the rest of council would like to put that in, back in that contract as well.
So, first of all, you, what you're talking about for all the councils, the, is the in-kind services contract between the city council and the rescue squad. Correct. So we don't, we don't have a comprehensive contract, uh, like we should have for the service that a contract provider, Augsburg Volunteer Rescue Squad is providing to the city. We have to do that. So the reason the dates and, and I guess for, for clarification, you all were given the agreement as I sent it to them in a draft that we are negotiating. There was no, uh, there was nothing, nothing that you all didn't have a, a opportunity to look at. Um, so we, we're going to negotiate that in-kind services agreement. Because it was important, what they came to us for was they wanted the workers' comp change and we agreed to that. I support that. But we also have got to write a proper contract and I want to have that prepared for the next budget cycle. Uh, that will just, will describe the level of service required, the service expectation. And what we will do to support, uh, the rescue squad going forward. So one of the things, counselor, I'm not, uh, I, I'm not amenable to at the moment is the contract of the rescue squad has no, no bearing on what we assign or don't assign the fire department to. The fire department's EMS mission is, is well-defined now. Uh, the only restriction, uh, that are in place now are restrictions that we put in place, uh, due to COVID. Uh, those will stay for, you know, for another, every thirty days we look at that. But, um, but I'm not going to negotiate the fire department mission through the rescue squad contract. This is not, that's not proper. We shouldn't do that and I'm not going to be sidelined into doing that through it. We, we, we continue to look at the fire department mission. We, me, you all determine what the fire department's mission is, not, not the rescue squad. So, um, no, no contract with the rescue squad should be, should be predicated on what the fire department does or does not do. Situations you just described, I'm not, uh, deliberately to get into all the details with them. Uh, there's a lot of sensitive information there, but I will tell you, most of your information is, is at least accurate to the degree it happened here. But the whole issue is getting an ambulance here. Doesn't matter how long I have a fire truck here, doesn't long, how long they're here. We've got to, we've got to make sure we can get ambulances here. And that's my concern. Is that it did take over thirty minutes to get an ambulance here. We don't put people in fire trucks and transport and we don't put people in pickup trucks. I've got to make sure that we have proper ambulance response in the city. So I don't, I don't, this is not any more emotional than it needs to be. The, the ambulance squad service is as much your responsibility and my responsibility is the police department and the fire department. The fact that we contract that service doesn't make us less responsible for it. Uh, but we don't have a comprehensive agreement that says what this city expects for EMS service. We don't have that. The ambulance squad is, it's got a changing demographic going on. I don't think that's any, anything new to any of you that have been on council for a while. It's getting harder and harder for EMS to function in the career world and the volunteer world. This group is taking on more service as the outlined services are unable to provide service. They're taking on more and more with the same manpower, which means there'll be ambulances out of service. The reason we didn't have an ambulance in Augsburg for the call here on Monday, as you mentioned, is because they were on fire scene standby, uh, over in Huelton. So there's a lot of things to consider. Uh, there's a lot of factors that have to be considered. So I want to give them the agreement they need to continue through the rest of the year, which will also give them the workers' comp help that they need. Uh, but we're not, I'm not, I'm not negotiating the fire department mission through the, uh, ambulance contract. It's, it's not going to do it. It's not proper. And again, you all need a proper contract put in front of you that, that talks about what the service expectation is from the rescue squad. And it doesn't matter that they're volunteer or not. We, we have a responsibility to make sure that service is, is provided.
Well, I think as a citizen, if somebody's having a seizure, we should get a response from our fire department and our first responders. Any life and death situation, regardless of whether or not an ambulance can, can make it. That's what we have our trained EMS, EMT service for. And, and they should be responding. So no more deaths if we can help it, you know? And so I think there's a chance for citizen participation later on.
All right.
But, uh, but I'm just stating, that's what I'd like to see out of my EMS, as much response as we possibly can to save lives. Uh, that's what they're there for. And has, has the rescue squad signed that contract yet?
No, no. Uh, Ken Garden and I spoke about it. Uh, we talked about some possible scenarios to, uh, resolve their concerns and I think we'll, we'll do that. So it's, I sent you that contract. That was the draft. You all giving me authority to, to negotiate and talk to them about it. I, we didn't send them anything that said they had to sign it. Again, we approved the one thing they asked for, which was them to come on the workers' comp and I'm, and I'm willing to, to make sure that's taken care of. But these other issues have to be resolved. We have to have a proper contract. The fact that you haven't had a proper contract for years is, is just, just a fact and we just have to take care of that.
When, when was the last contract?
When, when was the last contract?
Well, this one was negotiated about two years ago, but all your contracts, I look back at them, have never had a service delivery expectation, a level of service discussion. You know, and we don't, and we don't hold the Rescue Squad anything right now. We don't say one ambulance, two ambulances, 10 ambulances, we don't say anything about that, and we have to do that. The very same way you're talking now about the level of expectation from your Fire Department, your Police Department, we have to have that discussion with the with the Rescue Squad as well. What what needs to happen in the city for the call volume we have? And it's and it's getting more difficult. The scenario you just described on Monday is not, that's not an unusual scenario, it happens almost every day. Uh, we have, there's multiple calls that go on, and there's only so much EMS available to to handle that. The Fire Department's being used appropriately. I'm not uh, I'm not sanctioning back to the Fire Department going to every EMS call. On one hand, we're talking about not having the manpower to adequately fight a fire. But you had to afford a, in an EMS call here in City Hall is a good example, two firefighters here waiting 25, 30 minutes for a patient. That's two firefighters that aren't going anywhere. Now, two or three firefighters left in the fire station are going to fight a fire with only two or three people. So it's, we we can tell the story however we want to, right? We can, we can make it, we can make it about fighting fires when that's convenient, we can make it about EMS calls when it's convenient. But the truth is, we don't have the people to do both. We have an ambulance squad that's primary mission is EMS. We need to make sure that mission is in place and and proper, and then and then figure out who helps. Why don't I just assign a police officer to respond to every EMS call? Why don't I sign a D P W to respond to every EMS call? Everybody's got a mission, right? I mean, everybody's got a mission. We could train them.
But they're not trained.
If we have firefighters sitting there that are trained, while somebody in this town needs their help, and it's a life and death situation, they should be there.
Yeah, they're not, no, they're not going to go into life and death calls. That's that's completely inaccurate, that's what you're being told, that's not accurate.
Well, that's a perception, correct? And I'm not looking to, I'm not looking to create a debate. I asked a question, and I was trying to get to the other part of the question. When's, do we have a current agreement with the O V R S?
We do.
R S right now, when's that expire?
Absolutely. 2022 or 23.
And and with that mutual aid in that contract?
No, we, no.
So the agreement with.
Our Fire Department is the mutual aid or ambulance squad.
Under the old agreement?
Yep.
Would we have had a response here on December 20th, on Monday afternoon upstairs? Under the old agreement, would we have had a response here? The current agreement?
Yes.
And then why is that?
And you still had a response here on Monday.
Pardon?
You still had a response here on Monday.
Well, 30-minute response.
Well, 30 minutes for an ambulance to get here. I think we were here in 11 or 12 minutes. It's it's about the same time this call came in, and again, this is call details.
Let's, let's.
But there, there was lots of details surrounding that day. We were here as soon as we could get somebody here. They were at another call, as soon as they cleared that call, they came here, and they were here until the ambulance got here.
Okay, so under the current agreement.
Yeah, nothing's changed.
But well, apparently some of the language, no, you're looking to, you're looking to change an agreement that's good until 24 and remove EMS services, E M T services.
Just, no, I'm not looking to remove it, I'm saying we don't need to have Fire Department services embedded in the EMS contract, that there's no, it's it's not the same uh service, or we don't need to have the two in there. And again, we're not, I'm not going to be tied to a level of service with the volunteer Rescue Squad that we expect to do EMS to have the Fire Department support that. If we can support it, we will. The Fire Department's primary mission is fire, hazmat, and rescue. Those are the primary missions. Those are the primary missions.
And every one of them is a trained E M T.
They are.
Thank you.
I I respectfully disagree, and I think that part of their contract years ago, uh, they negotiated the the E M T service for the city. There, there is a signed agreement.
They did not.
Responding.
That's not true. No, that's true.
Uh, well, I have a, I have a copy of a signed agreement from Andy Fritz when he was chief with the Rescue Squad to uh handle calls.
Right. Andy Fritz is no longer the Fire Chief.
Right, right, but this, it it's never expired.
It's expired.
There's no termination date.
There's, again, see what you're doing now is you're you're bounding the ambulance squad to determine what we're going to use the Fire Department for.
Basically, I'm just trying to set forth reality. Reality is, is it's another way to break down our Fire Department and keep reducing guys. We got a contract for 24 men to provide E M T service for the city, who's who's paying for it.
I mean, I could.
It's.
If the ambulance squad needs staff, as you all know, I offered them the opportunity to ask for it during budget time. If they need staff, if they need manpower assistance, they need to come and talk to this council about what they need. Making the assumption that we're going to use the Fire Department to fill in gaps with employees that cost far and away more than they cost in the Rescue Squad is not an immediate prudent fiscal decision.
It doesn't have to be a prudent fiscal.
Yes, it does.
It has to be a a matter of life and death decision. And the taxpayers are paying for the service, so why aren't we using?
We are using, we're using, gets used every day.
Well, I'd still like to see that put back in there.
Negotiations are ongoing.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
And uh, this brings us to new business. And we will begin with uh, City Manager Stephen Jolly.
I'm going to defer to Angela Gray to give the update on the 20, February 2021, and uh, just a quick update to the 2020 closeout that we provided last meeting.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. Um, the 2020 closeout was changed. Um, at the time we did that work, there was a 20, 15% withhold on your AIM funds from New York State, which is your aid and incentive to municipalities. The state was withholding approximately $342,000 of your money, and at that time, we did the financials, it didn't raise to a level of um being recorded in the financial statements per the standards, so we did not record that. We did receive notification that the state would be returning $256,000 of that withhold. So we've updated the 2020 report that you were given, and it was, I believe, mailed out to you. And as a result, at the end of 2020, we're predicting a fund balance surplus in the general fund of a little over $1 million. So we leave the 2020 year with a constitutional tax limit of 84.5. We enter the 2021 year with a constitutional tax limit of 80.6. So I think that answers a question that was posed earlier. In looking at your February 2021 report, um, this shows you your activity for the first two months of the year. We would expect a spend down of about 83 to 85% of remaining in each budget. The revenues comparatively to prior year, I can just tell you, your system does not report in a comparative manner, but they're slightly ahead for 2021, mainly related to sales tax collection. So that's um a positive sign for the city. In looking at your budget report by department, you'll notice that there's approximately four anomalies that fit outside of, you know, what we would anticipate for prop, for timely spending. And they're all explainable in the Mayor's Counselor Department. Um, we have 77% of that budget remaining, and that's mostly personal services, but we did purchase some equipment in there for video conferencing, so that um was a contractual expenditure that was budgeted for. Under the code enforcement, which is Department 3620, about halfway down the list, we have 77% of that budget remaining. We would typically expect the 83%, but we had a payout of a time accrual upon a retirement, so that um is skewed there. The Rescue Squad, we've met the entire obligation of $78,000 that the council had committed to the Rescue Squad, so all that money has been paid to them, and there's no more money to go over there. The street lighting is the next item that has an anomaly in it, there's 70% of that budget remaining. We would expect that definitely to be 83%. What's going on there is a reduction of solar credits. So the staff and the comptrollers opposite myself have been trying to research that and see why we have such a reduction in the solar credits. Uh, we did reach a stumbling block um by mention of what was mentioned earlier. I don't have the authority right now to or did not to work with National Grid, but we do have a local representative that I'm familiar with, and um he's willing to help us, but he needed the proper authorization. So we'll continue to muscle through that. And then the other one, as expected, is the arena. I mean, it's a winter activity, so we would be spending that budget a lot faster in the winter months than we would in the spring months. So those are the three, four highlights for the month of February. Looking at the water and sewer funds, there's really no anomalies there to talk about when we look at comparison of revenue or rate on target where we were the year before. So there's nothing surprising in those two funds either. Um, looking at your budget report by expense type, everything in that um is fairly represented. There's really nothing collectively by expense types that um would be worthy of further analysis at this point. We're only two months through the budget, so there's still, you know, healthy amount of the year to come, and we'll continue to monitor that as well. Um, Counselor Powers, you did mention that $49,000 check in your question on the warrant, and I just want to address that. There was an inter-fund loan that was required to be approved by council back in 2019, so we'd have to look at the 2019 minutes to see if that was actually approved to loan money inter-fund. Um, but that money was repaid, it was required to be repaid at the end of 2019, and it was not. So the Office of State Comptroller, when I was working on your 2019 A U D revisions for the corrections to that, flagged that, and um that money was repaid, so that was the 49,000.
Through a loan through 2019?
Yes, that loan was generated in its inception, sometimes pre-2019. It was on your 2019 audit report, it should have been paid back before December 31st, 2019.
And that was reflected in this year's budget?
Uh, because it's a loan, it's a non-budgeted item.
So it doesn't necessarily need legislative approval?
It needs legislative approval certainly to make the loan from the sewer fund to capital project.
But to pay back?
Uh, that's, the resolution back in 2019 should have stated the terms of that loan, which includes repayment terms.
And your research did it? The resolution?
It was.
Oh, we're still looking into it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we're looking into that, but just to address that, that's a 2019 issue.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thanks, Angela.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any new business?
Uh, sir, so I passed around to hand out to all of you something I want to bring to council's attention. Uh, so Counselor Scamp, we're just speaking of the Fire Department and fiscal prudence. What I, what I've, what I got in front of you tonight um is our initial work on figuring out where we're going to go with healthcare going forward. We've talked about the the significant expenses that healthcare is, which in between the plans has yielded some savings, but uh, health costs continue to go up. We're on target this year for a potential 12% increase, so I I want you all to see where we are now, where the plans are going forward, and what you'll see from this plan here is that we've got everybody from this point forward on a 20% cost share. So you'll see clearly there, the Police Department, the Public Works Department, the administrative staff, everybody is on course to be paying 20%. We do have uh, three, four people here, three, four people there, you know, of the um more senior group that kept their flat-rate plans, but ultimately moved everybody else uh last year to the to the 20% plan. The Fire Department is roughly 7%. That's, that's roughly what the Fire Department is paying towards healthcare. Everyone else 20%, the Fire Department 7%. Fire Department salaries outpace everybody else. The Department of Public Works salaries are 37% less than the salaries in the Fire Department. They're paying 14% more in health insurance premium. The administrative staff, 39% less in salary, 14% more in insurance premium. Police Department, 10% less in salary, 14% more in insurance premium. So we will have to address in the coming year with all the, all the bargaining units, the health insurance. One of the things we're going to have to address is the disproportionate share that the Fire Department contract was allowed to negotiate at a percentage far and away greater than everybody else while making the most money of all the employees in the city. I need council to be aware of this because this is going to be another issue with the Fire Department contract that we are going to have to address. We can't avoid it. I don't see how that we can, we can allow even for a much longer than this period of time to have such a disparity in how we're paying our employees and what we're expecting people to pay for healthcare. So I ask all of you to look at this, consider the impacts that this has on our employees, consider the impact that it has on our budget. Counselor Scamp, when we talk about staffing, you see again what the average salary costs us to pay for a firefighter for one year is $131,968. It is a cost that is far and away too high. We can't continue this, we cannot continue burden rates above salaries of 40, 50, and 60%. These are just costs that are that are going up all the time. We didn't, we didn't get here overnight, we're not going to get out of it overnight, but we've got to reverse course. Um, and I need council to be aware of this, we have contracts that were all recently negotiated all the same time. And again, the most stark difference here is this cost of health insurance, and and we're going to have to equalize that. Um, again, we have the employees making the least money, paying the most for health insurance, the employees making the most money, paying the least for health insurance. At some point, we have to grasp reality with these things. We have a small city workforce, the the difference and complexity nature of the of the work is not so difficult or different amongst all these jobs. We've got to look at how we get this pay, someone in line for everybody, and we certainly have got to take a look at how we provide healthcare to our employees and what we ask them to pay for.
Recognize your concerns here, but uh, I don't think this is the forum for this discussion, if anything, related to any binding contracts that are in play right now, and anything related to anything personnel and financial should be done in executive session with this body. Period.
This discussion would not qualify for executive session, we're not talking about anybody individual, and I'm not talking about negotiating a contract now. I'm calling to your attention.
The sky is falling, and I understand that, and I, and I respect that, but at the end of the day, you're talking about a contract that's in place and health insurance benefits that have been negotiated, and those contracts are good until the end of the terms of the contract. Those discussions are to be held in executive session. You're out of order. Period. It is, but it's not a negotiation. He's got an opinion, and he can levy his opinion, but that's for this body. He's the CEO of this city.
I am.
He's formulating an opinion and trying to enforce it upon us.
A 39 difference in pay, Counselor, I think is not an opinion, it's a fact.
And a negotiated deal.
It's a fact.
I, I think this should have been brought up, I think this should have been shown to people before it was approved. I think, I think it was done in secret, and 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 now people know, nothing wrong with that. And it, and it is, I can just look at the, some of these uh, the, the pay scale and what they're facing uh with their health insurance, their pay is so low to to, and they're paying the the greatest amount, 20%. I mean, I'm sure that there's people working in City Hall and D P W that cannot afford the family plan.
Price tag on health insurance, man.
I, 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 I uh, I think, I think it's good that everyone sees this. Uh, is there um?
Public participation.
I don't know, uh, we all done?
What's that?
Okay, uh, anyone attending like to address council, come down to the podium, we have two minutes.
Uh, just two things, just for point of reference. Um, number one, uh, the original Green Belt Plan called for the city beach to be between the community center and the boat lot site. It's going to be an amphitheater setting, okay? It was going to be dredged back to the pool. Also in that agreement that was called for was to enclose the city pool so it could be used for year round. Okay, uh, that was nixed because of the expense at the time.
Thank you.
I'm not speaking in opposition to Bill Number 17 concerning the assessments and the research you're going to do with that, but I want you to look at another harsh portion of that. If two neighbors side by side start off with the same assessment, they both do equal work to their home, two years pass by, neighbor two sells their home, so they're both assessed at $50,000 when they start the work. When they're done, they're worth $75,000. One neighbor retains their home, the other neighbor sells it. They sell it for $75,000. What's going to happen to the new neighbor that now paid $75,000, and their assessment most likely will mirror what they paid because that's full value? If you leave that alone, now the neighbor that received no increase versus the neighbor that just purchased the home after the end of one year would pay a little over $100 more per month between city, county, and school taxes. So if you're looking at some kind of program for people that do renovations, and I agree, a new roof should not constitute an assessment increase. What are you going to do for an equal neighbor that bought an equal house? How is that going to be handled? So I think that needs to be considered when you do your investigation work. So thank you.
Thank, thank you, and and uh, just so, you know, I I've uh, looked at these different situations, and I've seen a number of homes where the purchase price was, say, 70,000, and for some reason, the assessment that year went to 60. And I've seen this more and more, and I I can't understand that, how that happened, and then, and then they just stayed there for 10 years. There, there's quite, quite a few incidences of that, and uh, I can't understand.
Well, that's something that had been looked at, and when I was on council, I actually uh asked. asked, and we had an assessment presentation to the community for four of the years that I was on council, and to explain the differences, not to brief that assessment, but to explain how the process is done. And in my estimation, there are too many neighborhoods in the city, so you're never going to get a complete assessment done in a timely manner. And I had that same discussion with the city assessor from the seats that you're sitting in now. Dan, remember those discussions I had? Too many neighborhoods, you're never going to get an accurate assessment. I also asked if we could have a full assessment done of the entire city by an outside entity, because some small cities have done that. The cost was too prohibitive. So that would start everyone off on the same foot without having one neighbor paying an assessment with the same house for $70,000, another one at 45, another one at 80. So again, I'm not speaking in opposition to this. I'm just saying there should be a fair and equal benefit to everyone in the city. So if we're going to do that there, it should be for the new person, because there actually used to be, and I don't know if it's still there, but it was called the welcome neighbor. And it was basically, everybody's assessment stayed the same, but the guy that's new to the neighborhood now has the higher assessment because they have paid a higher price because of market trends. And I think we're going to see a lot more of that with the current market that we're in, real estate. So I'm just asking you to consider that and look into that as you're doing that, so it's fair for everyone. Thank you.
Hello, I'm just calling, I'm just up here to ask about the pertinence and value of NFPA 1710 as it relates to the discussion we're having about the fire department and EMS calls. Thank you.
We probably not getting the answer out tonight, but sometime, sure, as it relates.
Sure.
Unless you can answer it tonight. I don't know. Okay.
Sure.
Sure.
My question, I think, was a valid one. And regardless of whether or not E or NFPA 1710 has merit in this discussion, I don't think it's right that I would get a sure when there was a possibility of discussing it. Well, if you don't know what it is, I get that, and maybe there's some research that needs to be done. And I mean, I could read you what it is, or certainly you could be directed to it, but I would think that.
Could you give us a quick?
Oh, yeah, it talks about, well, I think the history and purpose part of it is the standard is applicable to substantially all career fire departments and provides minimum requirements, minimum is capitalized, for resource deployment for fire suppression, EMS, and special operations while addressing firefighter occupational health and safety. And it just talks about the fire department shall clearly document its role, responsibilities, functions, and objectives for the delivery of EMS. EMS operations shall be organized to ensure the fire department's capability and includes members, equipment, and resources to deploy the initial arriving company and additional alarm assignments. And it goes on. I mean, it's pretty long. Those are just a couple of the highlights.
Why don't you put it in writing what you want and address it to the staff?
Well, it's not so much what I want. I was just wondering if it's pertinent as part of the discussion for the fire department and EMS responses. And I just, I just had to say that I feel pretty disrespected to get a sure when it comes to whether or not it's going to be discussed or even.
Discussion.
No, I understand that it gets to, that I understand things need to be discussed. I'm not doubting that. What I don't like is that I gotta, sure.
Thank you.
It's not fair.
Thank you, Margaret.
I'm Michael Tulley, 214 Hamilton Street here in Augsburg. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. First, I commend Counselor Reese for his efforts and his work on preparing a draft comprehensive development plan for the city. I look forward to reading it. I do think there's value in Mr. Loffler's comments earlier tonight that prior plans developed by prior city administrators and counselors might be pulled from the archives and reviewed for ideas as part of this process. Secondly, in regards to the appointment of the city comptroller tonight, I am very confident that Angela Gray and city comptroller staff will do an excellent job for the city. I was impressed by Angela's report and presentation to you at an earlier meeting as well as tonight. Very concise, highlighting the important information, getting important information to you. Having said that, at the same time, I currently believe the city should have a city comptroller as an employee here in City Hall on a daily basis, physically with their staff on a daily basis, physically able to meet with members of the community on a daily basis. So I will hope you reconsider your position in 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is it, anyone else would like to come up? Tony?
Mr. Jelly, is the fire department currently getting dispatched all EMS calls when the rescue squad is?
Steve, this is not a question and answer, so. Take, please, Kathy, take note of all questions, and then we can.
What percent of your salary do you pay for health insurance? We got two minutes. I can sit here and watch you. Why is the numbers not available any longer at the fire department? Because of actions you've taken? Have you moved to the town, city yet? You're able to discuss stuff that you want to with people, right? That you think you can push over. You may be able to pull the wool over these guys' eyes with your jibber jabber and talk in circles around them. When it comes to the fire service, I'm different. I've challenged you many times, and you failed to take the challenge. You can sit there and laugh, but I'm proving my point right now, that you can't answer the questions and prove me wrong. This lady right here just asked you a question pertaining to NFPA 1710, something you should know everything about, being that you are EMS and emergency services person, professional. You know everything, right? I think you were just proving that you know nothing.
Is anyone else coming up? Anyone?
Are you ready for the online participants? The first individual is registered as Scott McRoberts, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted, sir. Here's your line is open.
Yes, good evening. I'm glad to see the council is in the mood to passing resolutions with goals for the city in 2021. Would a counselor please present one at the next meeting to make it a goal in 2021 to maintain the city marina? Many people paid good money for this facility, and I know I'm not the only one who would like to see the conditions improve this year. Some personal water craft were disabled last year because of the weeds, leaving some residents stranded somewhere out on the river after they sucked the weeds up and their, and their impeller gets plugged up. Some residents even went as far as to clean the marina themselves and put the weeds in a manageable spot for the DPW staff to pick up. Last year, the city missed an opportunity to get that culvert repaired when they had a contractor working on the boardwalk. The city DPW does have the equipment necessary to repair that culvert. It's not something that happened just in the past year. It's been that way for years, but it was highlighted last year because we had no city rec employees taking care of the marina on a daily basis. So as somebody who's already paid for his slip again this year, I would hope that we do see some improvement next year. So I'd like to see a council present that as a goal at the next meeting, and that way we can all work towards it. Thank you.
The next individual is registered as Penny Sharrow, and I will unmute that individual now. Here's your line is open.
Good evening. Attention in this room is pretty tight tonight, and I wasn't going to talk, but I'm going to. To begin with, I think the beginning of the meeting that Mr. Loffler was disrespected. He should not have been. You talk about the pool and the beach. Well, you're talking to the guy who was there when the beach was open. I ran the beach for a number of years. I ran the pool for 19 years. He might have been a good source to go to to find out why everything went down like it did. So perhaps we should be a little more respectful of the people that were in charge of it back when it was open and why it had to close. That's just my opinion. As he came forward right there, he told you there were plans out there at one time. Maybe none of you knew that. There were plans out there at one time. But maybe you ought to research things a little bit better. I would love to see a beach. The pool is great. The beach would have been wonderful. But to do things now, I, I don't know. I just, you need to talk to people that have been there. The other thing is, I think he was disrespected by the city manager personally. He basically got in a little yelling match at him. City manager does your bidding, and maybe he should be told, reminded of that every now and then. That probably put a target on my back, but oh, well. The next thing is EMS as a fireman, as a citizen. Those EMS have been on the scene a number of times and held on until the rescue squad could get there. That is part of their job as an EMS, to be there immediately until help can arrive. And that is one of the things we pay for taxes in the city, and I, the fire department needs, and you are the ones that cut them down to, as he said, there were five, now we sent two EMS out. Well, there were supposed to be at least 24 guys on a ship. It wasn't them that cut them back. It was you. So we would have had enough EMS and still had a fire call go down the right way. So you have first responders there. They're there for the citizens, and it is life and death. It's not a matter of, oh, we got this and we got that going on. Yeah, the rescue squad is wonderful. And when they get there, they transport, and they take over. That's what the EMS, the first responders are all about. They are there until help comes. They aren't there to transport them. They're there to help them. And maybe that needs to be clarified. Somebody seems to have all the answers, so maybe I'm not, maybe I'm speaking out of turn.
Thank you.
And the other thing is, what about when you, when you're talking about all this greenscaping and stuff like that, and you said that there's somebody out there, Andrea or someone that has a landscaping degree or whatever, maybe there's some colleges in the area that would like some interns to come out and have projects out there. Maybe we could select a project for one of them or something like that. Put it out to the colleges that have these programs out there and bring some young viable minds in to see what they can do with our downtown. Maybe it wouldn't cost us any money. Sometimes you have to think outside the box to get something for nothing, maybe. And I have to agree with Mr. Powers. The beach is wonderful, but there's a number of things that went, that were wrong down there. And, you know, there's a bath house down there, a bathroom. How is it still utilized? Has it been utilized? Are these all things that you've checked into? And in regards to the insurance rates, I kind of like pitting the one department against the other in a way when that was brought up, and I agree, it should probably be discussed in executive session. Are the, are the insurance rates, one question I have, Mr. Jelly, are the insurance rates different for the different departments? So if I'm paying, if the firemen are paying 7% of theirs, is what they're paying equitable to what the DPW is paying for their 20%?
Penny, your time is up, but thank you.
Okay, good night.
Anyone next?
The next individual is registered as Maureen McNally, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted.
Anybody else?
Would you like me to move on, Mayor?
Yes.
The next individual is registered as David Price, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears your line is open, sir.
I just want to point out that the, I was accused earlier of being inaccurate, I think, by the resolutions and the discussion. It was proven that I wasn't. And more importantly, when asked a direct question from Doug Loffler about the comptroller's office and would they be available to answer questions, he was told, yes, they would. And that's the expectation, is that someone would be there to answer it. And then the answer was kind of addicted by another person. So I think the mayor and city manager might want to get on the same page as far as what the expectations are of people in those offices. Thank you.
I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, so we do not have a need for executive session. And at this time, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?